Welcome all, we're going to go ahead and get started. We have a couple of very important presentations. Mr. DeHany?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, at the request of several city members, several members of city council, we're going to have Dan Peterson, the Chair of the Aquarium Foundation, come in and have a conversation with the council regarding the conversation that's been going on now as it relates to the city and the foundation working together to determine the best next steps and appropriate course for the aquarium. And the next question here will be Dan Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Patrick.
Yep.
Well, good afternoon. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, thank you very much for allowing me to come in front of you today. My name is Dan Peterson, and I have the privilege of serving as the Chair of the Virginia Aquarium Foundation. I am joined by various members of the Virginia Aquarium Board, as well as other aquarium constituents who have a vested interest in the continued long-term success of the aquarium. Could you all please stand up in the crowd for those here representing the aquarium?
Welcome, everybody.
Thank you all. As it relates to our meeting today, I have a brief presentation highlighting the core elements of the foundation and our strategic alliance with the city. It is important to recognize that this is a tiny subset of the overall impact the Virginia Aquarium has within our community. However, I thought it was critical to reiterate these attributes. Upon completion of the presentation, I would like to open the floor for any questions the council has of the foundation. Why don't you handle that, Debbie? Thank you. The strategic alliance with the city started in 1986 and has spanned nearly 40 years. I want to reinforce the fact that the foundation is a teaming partner with the City of Virginia Beach and not a vendor. Per my conversation with the city auditor, the City of Virginia Beach has no other similar relationship with another entity. As a reminder, the city owns the land and physical building associated with the aquarium. The foundation owns the over 5,000 animals, as well as all the exhibits. Based on our most recent 2024 financial report, this represents a net asset book value of $32 million for the foundation. Since inception, the foundation has raised over $100 million for the aquarium, and most recently raised 14 million on a goal of 9 million for the South Building and the Dartmoor Marine Science Center. According to Sage Policy Group, the aquarium has a direct and indirect economic impact of $257 million for the City of Virginia Beach, and this figure increases by 37 million to 294 million for the Commonwealth of Virginia. Overall, the aquarium supports 3,000 jobs within the city, generating 85 million in labor income annually. The Virginia Aquarium is a learning and educational institution. The foundation financially supports school and youth education programs focused on SOL-based learning experience to complement school curricula. Over the past two years, more than 28,000 students from Virginia to upstate New York have participated in these courses. From a local perspective, 9,000 of those students attend schools in Virginia Beach, and 3,300 students are enrolled in Title I schools. We truly are an educational institution. As a coastal city, all residents, including the City of Virginia Beach, have a moral obligation to ensure the long-term sustainability of our waterways, as they have a massive impact on our local economy, as well as our daily life. The Virginia Aquarium Foundation maintains accreditation with the Association of Zoos and Aquariums, the World Association of Zoos and Aquariums, and the Alliance of Marine Mammals, Parks and Aquariums. These accreditations result in a nationally recognized stranding response program overseeing Virginia's 7,213 miles of shoreline 365 days a year. Over our 30-year history, the Stranding Response Team has aided 6,500 marine mammals and sea turtles. Currently, in 2024, the professionals have responded to 89 marine mammals and 186 sea turtle strandings. The foundation-funded programs are enabled due to a permit providing the authority to conduct stranding response investigations. The foundation is the only entity in the state of Virginia with the ability to be able to administer these actions. This is critically important, because without this permit, we would not be able to aid any stranded marine mammal or sea turtle due to their protective nature. The Virginia Aquarium is the third most popular attraction in the Commonwealth and is truly our aquarium. It represents Virginia Beach's commitment as a premier coastal city to protect the ocean and its inhabitants, and educate our citizens and visitors about their value to our environment and a way of life. As you can tell, I'm extremely passionate about the aquarium. As an avid fisherman, surfer, and beachgoer, my life revolves around the ocean. I view my service on the foundation board as a small token of appreciation in giving back to all the joy and happiness the ocean waterways provide me. In closing, I want to clarify some points as we move towards the Q and A portion of this meeting. I will try to articulate my responses as succinct as possible. However, it is important to recognize that I am not representing Dan Peterson, the individual here. I am representing the entire foundation and all its constituents. Any decisions made are voted on by the Executive Committee, which is comprised of nine business professionals. If I utilize the first person as an "I" or "me," I am referring to the guidance of the overall foundation board and not the individual views of Dan Peterson. Thank you all for your attention, and I look forward to any questions you may have of the foundation.
And we appreciate you being here and everyone showing. It's obviously that the aquarium is a jewel to the City of Virginia Beach, and I think if we share one thing in common, is that you not only continue your success, but really take it to the next level and make sure that it's a viable situation in a very challenging economy, you know, going forward. And I am delighted that we're having the discussions, that we have the ability to come together and get to that win-win-win, you know, to the three entities that are involved going forward. And at that point, I'd just like to say, let's open it up for any questions or concerns from our council.
And, Mr. Mayor, on those comments, I want you to hear it loud and clear. We fully understand and appreciate the budgetary challenges that the city is facing, especially with the stormwater raise, inflation. So, we are trying to be very, very flexible as we move forward together as partners.
And I think our mutual goals among us is we get to yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, we're opening up to council members now. Anyone? Josh?
Mr. Peterson, thank you very, very much, and I'm sorry.
Josh and I are friends. Dan.
And I'm still Josh, too, so, yeah. I want to start by saying thank you to the foundation and to the many volunteers and staff who have contributed to making the aquarium the wonderful community asset that it has been and will be. And like the rest of us, you know, I've read the paper, you know, and I think there's been a little bit of, you know, just, I think there's been some dialogue around people perceiving the process that we entered into as being somewhat less than collaborative and perhaps, you know, there would more deference or respect needed to be shown to the foundation, or at least, that's what I've heard. I can assure you, and I mean, I know that I share in all the colleagues here, that nobody around this table doesn't love the aquarium. I know we all do, and we all want it to succeed, and no decisions have been made at all, other than just simply a desire to learn more. I know things can be a matter of perspective, right? So, being a relatively new council member, I just wanted to share with you a bit, and the many people in the audience, about my own perspective concerning our desire to explore options going forward and potential new ownership models. As you mentioned, the budget concerns, I mean, last year's budget, we were presented with nearly $100 billion shortfall for existing infrastructure projects. We had to redirect $60 million from existing infrastructure projects that were delayed deferred, and that means stripped of funding. So, critical road projects, including several in my council district that are, you know, long overdue and have ballooned in costs due to inflation and supply and labor challenges, and the stormwater requirements associated with those projects. I've learned that there's, you know, every major road project here is now a major stormwater project. And speaking of stormwater, the cost signaplate, the $567.5 million bonded projects under the stormwater referendum have doubled, and...
It's more like a billion plus, billion two.
Right, yes, it is. And we were also faced with aging schools and rec centers in need of replacement, so that'll, you know, potentially require hundreds of millions of dollars as well. So, those were the lenses, as a new council member, that I was wearing when I heard the information, you know, during our first retreat, and we were met with a quarter-billion-dollar ask to renovate the aquarium, and we were told the situation was dire. The tanks were leaking, and animals were at risk, and the facility was an immediate need-to-be investment. So, I just, obviously, the economic situation around all of us has drastically changed, and our city's infrastructure needs and stormwater commitments have ballooned for the reasons I mentioned. So, in terms of just the openness, the collaboration, that I know we all really, we said to the manager and staff that it should be a collaborative process. We've had no less than, I think, seven public briefings around this table on this topic, and more than a dozen meetings between staff and liaisons with the foundation leadership. And you all have met with our owner's rep, you've met with third-party, interested third-parties who've responded to the RFI. And like I said, a concern we all expressed from the beginning was to make sure we kept communicating with you along the way, and that you knew what we knew when we knew it. And, I mean, really, we weren't trying to be anything other than good stewards when we were met with, you know, that level of an ask, considering that other localities around the country who have reinvested in aquariums have not done so on the order of hundreds of millions, they've done so of like $10 million.
Sure.
So, we do value the aquarium, we do value the volunteers and the staff, and I'm hoping we can just use this as an opportunity to reset that narrative a little bit. And we're really just exercising a desire to learn more, and I hope we can jointly embark on a review of the assets and the facility and the financial, you know, the health of the operation itself, so that we can move forward in a way that makes sense for everybody. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was set out loud.
And one piece I'd like to add, you know, we have a little ownership as the foundation of that. This process that we started in looking at that new building, I mean, this started six years ago. What we fail to recognize as a foundation is, some of the city council members are new. Some of them were not involved with that initial process, and so there were numerous steps where we were, we kept on getting the thumbs up to move forward with the city over an extended kind of five-plus-year period time. We do recognize, though, that's a long time period, and over that, the dynamics, the financial dynamics have substantially changed, not only for the city, but for all businesses and all organizations. And so, when the foundation received the feedback that, of the $250 million sticker shock, when we received that feedback, that was the last day that we talked to 50. And there were certain components within that project. That was not a value-engineered product, project. That was a project built and constructed, assuming as little impact to the operations of the aquarium as possible. Within that project budget, there was also a $60 million parking garage, which was in the long-term plans of the city, so we were trying to incorporate that as well. So, in looking at a re-scoped project, we can pull 60 million, you know, out of that figure immediately, just by eliminating the parking garage. Subsequently to that, we had our architect-engineering firm kind of go back and rework plans and specs. Those figures kind of came back at more of a 50 to 75 million dollar, you know, where that is today. That was six months ago, you know, maybe, I'll call it a 50 to 100 million dollar range. Still very, very big numbers, I recognize that, but much further south compared to that $250 million figure. And one thing that I'd like to stress about the foundation board is, we're not of a fixed mindset. We're not of the belief that just because we've always operated and conducted this way for the last 40 years, this is the highest and best use for our operations, not only for the city's involvement, but also for the foundation's involvement. And so, that's one thing that I'd like to really drive home, is that we're open to exploring different models. What those models look like, we can't determine that at this time, but there are some key variables which the foundation is moving forward with, and some of those in partnership with the city, and I'd be happy to go into further detail about that, to continue to try and push this process forward.
Hey, anyone else?
The board and everyone from the foundation. I just want to reiterate, I was listening to some of Councilmember Shulman's talking points, and something that stuck out to me is a desire, I think for all of us at the table, and I'm sure in the room, to be a good steward of public funds and the marine life. And my question, when we had a discussion last week, or whatever it was, two weeks ago, my question really centered around what happened with the urgency. So, I know that we've been in this process for a year, at least, or so, and when we were initially told about these renovations, a lot of it had to do with preserving marine life and the animals and the tanks. So then we went through the process and brought in, you know, put up a request for anyone who's interested in looking at new ownership models. I know that the foundation met with them at the time, and there was a lengthy process. And then we were given, I want to say an ultimatum, but what it felt like was, either we put a pause on that and work with the foundation to try to get to a certain outcome. And again, for me, it's ultimately what's best for the marine life and the public funds. So, what's the, my question was, what's the timeline now? So if we're putting a pause, and what are we doing? And what, you know, is the urgency still part of this equation?
The urgency's never gone away. You asked kind of a number of different questions within there, and I'll try and provide some scale and scope to that. One component in that we're moving forward with right now is engaging an outside engineering firm to truly assess what the useful life is of our core key exhibits, which is the seal tank, the shark tank, and the turtle tank. So what is that useful life? Okay? That is a city asset. What the foundation has done, and what we've approved, is it's going to cost $100,000 to have a study conducted on those three exhibits to determine what is the useful life of that. It will then cost an additional $50,000, so $150,000 total, to conduct borings within the concrete to really assess the structural integrity of all that. The foundation has moved forward, now this is city responsibility, on an act of goodwill and good faith. The foundation has said that we would split the cost, the initial $100,000 with the city, so $50,000 each. There's a procurement process, and this is some of the value that the foundation brings to the table. There's a procurement process that the city manager has to go through to get this approved. When we reached out, and there's not a lot of firms that do this, there's like literally one firm in the world that does this. When we reached out to that firm, the earliest they can get us on the schedule today, which we've engaged them today, is December. And so then, they then have to conduct their studies, conduct their analysis, you know, don't hold me to these timelines, you're looking at probably another two to three months after that. And so what the foundation has done is, we're going ahead and engaging that consultant, we're going to upfront that cost with the verbal agreement that the city would then reimburse us for half those costs. Subsequent, so that's already been voted on, approved by the endowment, or by the foundation. The additional $50,000 to get the soil borings, and I think that's absolutely critical, because we need to determine what the useful life of our assets are. And to your point, that will then help uncover what our true sense of urgency is. Six months, is it three years, or five years? I have no idea. Nobody can answer that. I'll be going to the executive committee and requesting approval to go ahead and support a couple, splitting the cost and the additional $50,000. So, foundation, $75,000, city, $75,000. We don't have a formal commitment from the city, but we have a verbal commitment, and that enables us to speed up the timeline exponentially, because it would take two or three months for the city to get through their approval process, and then at that point in time, we're looking at trying to engage the engineer, and now we're another, you know, he's four months out today, where is he 90 days from now? I don't know. So that's a core component. As we continue to go through this process, what I'm trying to do, and what we're trying to do as a foundation, is determine what some of these variables are. Because if we're trying to look at a new, potentially a new ownership structure, potentially a new operating structure, whatever that looks like, and I want to clarify, I don't want people to get tied up with my words here, we're looking at ways to gain operational efficiencies, we're looking at ways to gain money from the state, from the federal government to augment these operations, and ultimately drive costs down for the City of Virginia Beach. That's one core component. Another, and that is where both of our interests align. Another core component for the foundation, we're a 501(c)(3). And when we sat down and met with potential operators, there was one consistent component with all those operators, was that they would have to own the animals and exhibits if they were to come in and operate. From a tax perspective, and this is a huge hot button, and I've engaged nonprofit tax attorneys to assist us through this road, or down this road, we are currently in the process, we have presentations tomorrow with two professional valuation CPA firms, and we'll be looking to engage them, I'll call it by the, no later than the end of next week. And what they will do is, they're going to provide a value, a fair market value, of the foundation assets, all-inclusive, and then also provide what a fair market value would be if the foundation were to lease those assets. If we, as a foundation, sell or lease those assets for anything less than fair market value, myself, the board members, we all face public sanctions, fines, because essentially that's tax evasion, and we're violating a 501(c)(3). So that is a very, very, those two are two very, very core, critical components that the foundation is moving forward with to try and assess, because until we figure out what those values are, we don't really know what we're marketing, we don't know what we're trying to create. And so what we've been moving forward with as a foundation is trying to fill in some of these unknown variables. Some of that are strictly foundation, some of those are foundation and city together. While we're doing this, I want to be very clear, we're going to continue to maintain all of our contractual obligations with the city, we're going to continue to operate how we've always operated, unless the city advises us differently. Does that answer your question?
Three exhibits, shark seals and...
Turtles.
Thank you.
Michael? Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Peterson. It's great to hear from you, and I want to welcome all the members of the foundation and volunteers from the Virginia Aquarium. I do want to say, before I make a comment, I really just have a comment to make, but I'd like to make a comment just on the matter that you just spoke about in terms of effectively deaccessioning some of your property. I think you should seek additional legal counsel on that matter. I, myself, I'm a museum professional, there is, I'm not suggesting that this is the best course, and that's not the course that I'm proposing, I want to be very clear about that, but there is a legal and proper way of deaccessioning objects that are owned by a nonprofit that is legal, it doesn't subject you to the types of penalties and fines that you suggested. So, I do want to, I just do want to acknowledge that there is a legal pathway to do that, if that's, and I'm not suggesting it is...
And we recognize that, and we've engaged legal partners.
Yeah, but I want to make sure we're just talking on, we're all on the same page, that it's not illegal or improper for a nonprofit to deaccession...
Correct, correct. It is not illegal or improper.
But more importantly, I think it's, as a museum professional, there are a few things that help make a community a great place. One of those things is cultural and educational institutions, and the Virginia Aquarium is one of those keystones for the City of Virginia Beach. And I'm so happy to hear your presentation around acknowledging the challenges that are before us, but also commitment to working in collaboration to ensure that we continue to maintain this outstanding cultural and educational asset for our community. And I remain committed to working through, as a member of this body and as a member of the community, with you to ensure that we do just that. So I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan, and all the staff, Aquarium, Foundation, thank you for coming today. Dan, I first want to thank you, the Foundation Aquarium staff, for the hard work you all have done over the last 18 months, that's how long I've been here, so I can't speak for prior, and I appreciate the flexibility that you've shown, especially given that you were caught off guard by our initial conversations, just as I was caught off guard when I read this article in the paper that said that privatization was on hold when we were actually on recess, and I highlighted a lot of what was said in the article that kind of didn't line up. So I have...
Well, the media can tell you firsthand that did not come from me, because I haven't returned any phone calls.
I've talked to the media.
A little shout at their head.
You didn't call them. I have some questions, but I've heard around the table economic challenges. Councilman Shulman's right, there aren't a lot of municipalities investing hundreds of millions, but I've also researched, there's not, I haven't found one municipality investing hundreds of million dollars in wave pools across the ocean either. The largest wave garden getting constructed right now in the UK, they're spending $55 million in the UK, and so I agree that municipalities may not be investing in aquariums, but they're also not investing in wave pools across the street from the ocean. Dan, to your knowledge, who are the liaisons to the aquarium exploration?
Worth Remick and Vice Mayor Rosemary.
Did the foundation have a problem with both liaisons and the mayor attending the July 10th meeting? Is there any concern there from the foundation?
It was my understanding they couldn't, because we didn't want to have three people so that information could be foiled.
Okay, so the motivation was so that it wouldn't be made public, the meeting?
I don't want you to spin my words, that was just my understanding.
Mark, can you opine on if it's illegal to have three people at a meeting, or if we just have to give public knowledge, public notice?
FOIA would require that if three or four members, three or more members of this body are present and discussing city business, that would qualify as a meeting, and under FOIA, you would have to give the certain notice requirements and minutes, et cetera.
And one thing I'd like to clarify is that no decisions were being made in that meeting. This was just an open discussion as to how two parties can come back together to move forward together.
Unfortunately, that's not the message that was sent to the public. At any park over the last 20 months, has the foundation requested to brief the entire city council?
We have. I said I'd be more than willing to come and debrief council whenever, whenever they wanted me here.
That's news, but thank you. September 2023, staff leadership met with the foundation. Were you in that meeting?
I can't remember what I did yesterday. Which meeting are we referring to here?
September 2023, the manager provided me a timeline of every meeting that was held, so September was the first time that we were told... So September was the first time that we were told that there was the foundation and the staff leadership meeting about this.
Was that the meeting here?
I'm not sure.
Yes, I believe I, I believe I was in attendance with, in that, in that meeting.
Okay. Well, I would ask, what was the outcome of the meeting from the foundation perspective, but that's a little bit longer than yesterday.
If, yeah, if, if you, I've got a very good memory, but we've had lots of discussions. I mean, this is a very fluid situation, and so I'd need you to really let me know which specific meeting that was, and I'd be able to address anything in that meeting.
In November 2023, a few months later, there was another description, staff leadership met with foundation. Again, you wouldn't know the outcome of that one either.
If you tell me what is, was that the meet, Patrick, do you know which meeting that was? Meeting here?
I think it was probably at maybe William Mullins' office in town center. This was probably after the RFI respondents, and we were probably, after we briefed council to close session about the survey results.
Yep. If that, if that was the RFI respondent meeting, then that was Mr. Duhaney and his team coming back and presenting what the results were of the, the survey.
Yep.
That was conducted and just presenting those results to the foundation in advance of.
Thank you. March, fast forward to this year, March 26, 2024, again, I'm just going by the manager's notes and the information I requested, continued engagement with foundation and competitive direct negotiations. You recall around that time, any, your perspective of how things were going from the foundation standpoint and working with the city?
I think March, it was after the city council and staff met with the interested parties, the foundation met with them, and maybe then, maybe they met with them. And after that, when I think that's when council may have given direction, appointed liaisons, and that may have been the first meeting with liaisons and representatives from the executive committee of the foundation to have a conversation about what next steps could look like.
And that would have been the meeting here.
Yeah.
Why, why has the foundation refused to share financial information with the city? And if that, if I've said that wrong or I'm not accurate, can you just clarify? Because that's what we've been told.
I guess I don't completely understand your question because we've shared all financial information that we're contractually liable to share, and we were receiving audit, we pay over $30,000 for audited financials every single year, and we provided all that to the city. So could you, could you clarify that?
Yeah, I'm on a, I'm on a re, email we received from Lyndon Remus, who's coming, I believe, in two weeks. And he shared with us on July 29th, he said, during the audit, we requested information from the Virginia Aquarium as well as the foundation so that we could properly perform our due diligence. However, per the attached letter from Dan Peterson, chair of the.
You're referring, you're referring to our partnership agreement. So, so we got a couple of components here. The information that was requested, the foundation has partnership agreements with third-party vendors, I think about four or five or so. And so releasing that information would release potentially some of their confidential information. And so in advance of doing that, I would have to check with those partners to ensure that they were okay with us releasing that information. In addition to that, I've never been told what the information being released was going to be used for, what the purpose of it was for. And I have a fiduciary responsibility, not only to the foundation, but to all of our constituents, especially our volunteers and especially our donors, to ensure that that information would be utilized in a manner that takes into consideration the best interests of the foundation. All we're asking for is a seat at the table. All we're asking for is a voice. And I apologize if that was taken, I think you said, as a kind of like a quid pro quo or something like that. That, that was not my intention, but when someone, someone, when anyone comes and asks for information and doesn't provide really what the purpose or the use of that information is for, I'm going to ask questions, and I have a fiduciary responsibility to do that. I'm happy to share that information. However, the foundation would be, would like to be involved in the process surrounding what is that information being utilized for to ensure that it potentially doesn't have negative consequences or doesn't take the foundation's interests into consideration. And I don't, I don't think that that's unreasonable.
And I know you said there was no decisions coming out of the meeting. I just want to quote our vice mayor, it says, we're going to put a, put it on a pause right now and try to work together. So put it on a pause, that's kind of a, that's a decision, not on the foundation's stamp.
That was a recommendation.
Recommendation. And being that we've been told we don't have the necessary financial information in the letter, not really a letter, but the talking points that we were presented. Number one is review the city and foundation's financial information to get a more accurate financial picture. So I'm just wondering why we haven't done that to date, if we've been so collaborative.
The city has never requested the additional due diligence that you requested today. And the last time we were audited was, I don't know, something like 12 years ago, something like that. And the information that we provided in that audit is the exact same information that we provided today and is the exact same information that we're contractually obligated to provide. And so I find it interesting that now the city's asking for additional financial information in light of everything else that's going on.
I find it interesting too. In the 710 to 2024 meeting, I know that you said there were no commitments made, but in March 2024, before we made any of these decisions to really move forward, prior to this presentation, and then prior to the first meeting, I asked you about, you petitioned us to not take any direction towards possible prior privatization, and that was ignored. So again, I don't agree that we've been very collaborative. When was the last time, if you, to your recollection, date, year, the foundation or aquarium performed a comprehensive assessment of the VAQ?
The VAQ?
The Virginia Aquarium.
And, and can you, what do you mean by comprehensive?
When was the last time the foundation or aquarium performed a comprehensive assessment? Again, we're being told or asked by our liaisons in their document that we got, that they want to conduct a comprehensive assessment of the VAC, VAQ facilities. Has that ever, to your knowledge, has that been done prior to this?
The Virginia Aquarium facilities assess the structural integrity of those facilities?
I'm just reading, it says that we want a pause to conduct a comprehensive assessment of the VAQ facilities.
Correct, which is what I was addressing earlier.
So I guess my.
My earlier comments, those three, the three most critical assets that we have.
So my question is, when was, has that been done before, or is this going to be the first time that's ever been?
This would be the first time. We've also got to recognize, all of these assets were built in brand new 20 years ago. They've got a useful life of around 20 years, and so we're at that point in time. We consistently maintain our assets, and the, the city consistently maintains their asset. They've got a capex budget, which I don't know off the top of my head, but that's continuously rolled into the aquarium on an annual basis.
This would be the first.
This would be the first, correct.
Can you specify what actions the Virginia Aquarium or the foundation has taken over the last five years to secure federal and state funding to support operations and capital improvements?
We currently, we currently do receive federal funding for some of our straining response programs.
But not capital.
And last, last year, we had a legislative luncheon where all of the delegates, all of our local delegates were in attendance, the mayor was in attendance, the vice mayor was attendant, in attendance. And we have liaisons, Phil DeStefani one of them, that in the budget this year put a $20 million annual ask, it was kicked out of the budget, then he put it back in. Ultimately, it was not passed. However, we do have liaisons. And the biggest challenge that we're facing right now is for us to be able to get money from the state. They want to know what support that we would have with the city. The city's asking what support we would get from the state. So we're sort of chasing our tail around in circles. And so that's why it's critically important for us to come together so we can show a united front. On the grand scheme of things, a $20 million ask on the state budget level, I mean, this is, we're, we're in the world of rounding errors.
And, and we've heard so much about the constraints on us, yet in the last 18 months, we've, this council approved over $120 million in mostly new spending, whether that's three or four for million for concerts, festivals, our city manager transferred 60 million for Rudy Loop. We have a VB trail match, we got 23 million to some parking garages at Mall, 14 million last budget to transfer to Atlantic Park, got a million at Laskin Road, 20 million at Amazon, 15 million Atlantic Avenue improvement. So there's, there's some money being tossed around, Dan. In June, you sent a letter to council stating that the process was being rushed and has affected trust between the foundation aquarium staff and city leaders. And I just wanted you to know, I couldn't agree more. And I also agree with Mr. Joel Rubin's assessment of the situation. I don't know who they are, but he's quoted, they're trying to cover or come to grips with the political implication of outsourcing the attraction, or at least the management of it. And I don't know who they are, but I'm not concerned about the political. I just think the priority has to be.
I can bring Joel up here. I see him in the back. He's hiding out. He's hiding out.
So I wasn't supportive of going in the direction that we went in with RS and S, if we truly were collaborative and listening to your voice. And so I'll end with, trust and collaboration allow an organization to pull together, to prioritize and share resources on behalf of shared goals. Working in silos and decision-making based on politics and self-interest perpetuate a negative environment where prioritize prioritization is nearly impossible. I apologize to you, the foundation, for the negative impact this council's decisions have had on the staff, volunteers and committed donors. We have clearly not prioritized one of our city's and region's most prized assets from, from a educational standpoint, a tourism standpoint, and/or an economic development standpoint. And so I hope that we can come together to actually collaborate, which requires communication effective. And I thank you for your time today, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
First of all, I just want to say thank you to the foundation for all of these years of doing all that you've done, because we could not have had this operation without that agreement. And I think we just got to the point where we were taking it for granted, and we just didn't realize all that the foundation was doing. And somewhere along the line, we just overlooked this very unique relationship that we've had all these years. And that's really unfortunate, but every now and then I think we have to maybe be concerned that we'll lose something before we begin to appreciate how much we've got. And I hope maybe that will be the good thing that comes out of this, that we appreciate what we have, and we just want to make it better. Of course, we, we know all of the wonderful things that it does as far as education, as far as amenity, as tourism and all of those other things. But the other thing that's so unique about this operation that I just would like to ask a couple of questions about is the stranding response. I noticed you said that this was formed in 1989, so it's sort of an additional element that you wouldn't think of, but if it's the only thing in Virginia that's permitted, it's pretty diagonal and unique. And, and I think it's such a, it's an additional thing to a museum to have this service that you all do. And because it's accomplishing something for the state and the nation, does it in any fashion qualify for funding from the state and the federal? It would seem to me that that's a service that you all are performing beyond being a museum that.
So that's, that, it's that, I'm, I'm a, I'm a finance guy, I'm a 20, 20-year banker. And so this is the yin and the yang, where Cynthia needs to smack me upside my head because if you look at the numbers for straining response, that is, there's no way to make money off of that. That, that is a loser, but it's, it's a mission. That is our mission focus, and it is one of our core missions. And one key component of that is the permit that the foundation owns. And in addition to that permit, we also have the ability, only organization in the state of Virginia, to be able to euthanize animals. So think about this. Think about the two whales that we just had earlier this season washed up on the shore. Without that permit, without that straining response, those whales sit there. If we've got an injured dolphin or an injured sea turtle that's washed up on our beach at Fifth Street on July 4th, that animal sits there without that permit. The foundation funds the costs of all that. We do get a couple hundred thousand dollars from the federal government, which is more than our fair share of the actual allocation to that amount of money, or to, to, to straining response on a national basis is, is fairly nominal. You'd be surprised. But that's one of the areas, that's one of our biggest fundraising focuses, where we fundraise over $2 million a year. And much of that fundraising is focused towards, and those dollars allocated towards the straining response component. And that's a core component of our mission. And, and Cynthia does, and her team do an excellent job of keeping me in check that it's not all dollars and cents, we're serving a bigger picture.
I think it's such a unique part of what you do, that it clearly does speak for the concern that the foundation has for the animals, not only those that are at the museum, but all of the animals that.
I would, I would argue all citizens that live in Hampton Roads or anywhere in this area have a moral obligation to support that.
It speaks highly of what yours, your mission is, and just say, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Amelia, and then Rosemary.
Well, I would just like to look back when you mentioned about the whale, Councilman Palucia and I were out there that very next morning. And it is a huge operation that you have, even allowing people to put a low strain so people could still watch what you were doing. Very professionally done, and I was very pleased he was as well. Other thing that happened where you mentioned, you heard Councilwoman Browns bring up, what is the urgency? It's because that first meeting that we had, you remember, we have Cynthia up here and we didn't have the foundation. So for me, if you're talking about the aquarium, and they have this whole foundation, where were they? It showed us as though they were not on the same page at that meeting.
Sure. I can appreciate that.
So can you see, I mean, talk to me about that.
The, the, the foundation is not perfect, and in hindsight, going back, there's numerous things that I would have handled differently, and we would have handled differently as a board. One thing that I can tell you is I have sat on numerous nonprofit organizations in the greater Hampton Roads area in various different cities. I've started nonprofit organizations. The board that we have at the foundation is absolutely second to none, and I want to thank all my fellow executive committee and board members. I mean, they go above and beyond. And if we had to actually put a dollar, and these are, these are business owners, these are executive level suites, C-suite individuals, if you put a dollar amount on their time, it would be a pretty scary figure as to the actual true inherent dollar value that they're putting in. And this is a professionally run nonprofit organization. Prior to taking over the chair, I was the treasurer for four and a half to five years. And I can assure you that the financial statements and how the foundation is run, it's being run by a bit like a business. With that said, is there opportunities to approve? Absolutely. With that said, are there ways that we could improve our partnership together? I think so. Do I know what those look like and what those are? I can't answer that for you. But what I can assure you is, is that we're trying to gather the data so we can start to fill in some of these gaps and come back to you with viable options. I don't know if a third-party operator is viable or not. No one can tell you that. I don't know if the foundation could potentially take on more of an operating role. I have some board members that are very, think fairly strongly that way, and I have some board members that would personally get behind it with some financial support. But we need to assess all of these different factors, and we need to assess these potential business models so that we can come back together to council to provide you with, hey, here are some potential solutions, and let you all decide what works. The highest and best use might just be, we keep operating the way that we're operating. I don't know. But I'm determined to find out.
It's important because after that, I heard from.
What you're saying is important, because after that, I heard from a young lady, Randy, where are you? She waved her hand, telling me all the way back, even making eyes. I mean, this is a group that are passionate. And we have former Councilman John Earn. We will stop and have a whole conversation, because they were passionate that we were going a certain direction that they didn't know about. But at the same time, in my mind, I said, well, here, when we got there first presentation, we imagined a dolphin, the water all leaking out, and there goes a dolphin down the street. I mean, we had a whole different urgency to it. And maybe now that you see and can work together, to come back to us. You know, that makes a whole different implication, because our children, our grandchildren, I mean, this is where you see fathers, the whole group coming out there. And I'm sure we don't want to give that away. And like what Councilwoman Henley said, you never miss the water, they're what? It runs dry. And this is where, this is where we are. I'm glad to see this turn out, because they're walking their talk by being here today. And so it is important that we be active listeners. And we all make mistakes. Maybe that first out the door, definitely not the best way that it came out to us. So having you all here with the support, you talking about the asset going back to actually come with real numbers of what these studies will show, then we can do a kumbaya.
Are we talking about 5 million or 50 million? I don't know. I know what our asset book value is, but what is our fair market value? It's a critical component.
This is serious business, and so is the aquarium. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Rosemary, then Worth.
Well, Dan, thank you so much for being here. And you've done a remarkable job of standing up and taking all the tough questions. And we're sweet, those wonderful people to show support, and we thank you for being here. And I have been a longtime supporter. Always, we always funded the aquarium over the years, and the last renovation, and the south building, and all of that. And I always said, we're only having these discussions not because we don't care, but because we do care.
Sure.
And my, my late husband was crazy about aquariums. And we visit aquariums all over the world. And of course, there's no better place than to visit the one. And it's right here. And, and I have, my daughters and I'll have memberships to it, because when they come to town, they, they really love the, the playground at the south building. They'll come and stay hours for there. So just want to thank you. And, you know, we've got probably the, one of the longest partnerships in the city with the aquarium and the city that's, that's in existence. And, and we've worked really well together over the years. And but even with partnerships and families, and it's almost like a family, you know, sometimes you have some bumps in the road. And, and I think because of finances and scariness of all of this, we kind of had a bump in the road here. But like all good families, you work them out, and you come back together, and you come up with solutions. And, and I think that, that some of the meetings that we had, which, by the way, Worth and I were appointed liaisons by this council, and we were tasked to meet with y'all, to, to work with things out. And, and one of those meetings, the mayor came, because it was requested that the mayor be there. And the mayor can meet with, with anyone he wants to. But I think we've created a, a list of things that we can agree on, and a, a path to move forward. And I was really excited about doing that.
We are as well.
Yeah, I think that it's a good path. And we, we called it a pause, or we could really change it to a stop. But that's not a stop in what we're doing. Because we, we, now we've got some guiding principles of things that we need to accomplish. So it's not really a stop. We, we want to, we need to figure out all the financials. And we never really had, which you stated so beautifully, we never had an assessment of the building, exactly what it is that we're looking at. And we, before we make any decision, we need to know what it is that we have, and what needs to be done, and costs, and all that goes along with it. And then efficiencies. I, it's been pointed out that there's some things that we could do, where we could be not only more efficient, but there are ways that we've left money on the table with, with the way we can charge for certain things, and not, and to take advantage of this fabulous asset, a jewel that we have, this aquarium. And then to go arm in arm, which you talked about the general assembly, but we didn't go arm in arm with you like we should have. And I think one of those guiding principles is to go arm in arm to the federal government and to the state, and also with the corporate. There's a lot of corporate who's very concerned about this. And we can pull them in. And I think that that's, we're going to be a lot more successful if we, if we know what exactly we're asking for, and that we show that we are together on this. And that's been a lot of the big question, is we're not, haven't been together, and it's kind of a ying and yang kind of thing. So I, I think we came up with a really good path to move forward. Is it a complete path? Of course it's not. But it's a great beginning. And I, and I think that working together and collaboratively, that's where we're headed, and to be able to work together. And the other day, once we gather all this information, we'll be able to know what's going to be...
What are the viable options?
Right. What are the viable options? And because we really don't know. So I just can't thank you, and Buffy, and the rest of your Foundation board to, working with us. And, and I, I think this is, this is a really good first step of putting the pieces back together again, and working together as a family.
Well, while I'm here, is that, my understanding is that council would like us to come back to them together, and deliver viable business options as to different ways to run the aquarium that don't impact the asset, or the impact that it has within the community, but potentially provide cost savings, or expense control, or some sort of financial certainty for the city into the future. That's in my head. That's what I've been hearing from you all, and that's what we're trying to move forward with. If that's incorrect, I need people to kind of speak up and address that now, because I'm, I'm marching down the wrong road.
Worth, before I get to you, Patrick, have something?
I was trying to go after Mr. Remy.
Okay.
And, and let me clarify. I know y'all have to vote on all that and, and do your stuff. But that's, that's the spirit. That's the spirit of what I'm up here today, and what I'm trying to, trying to present.
And Mr. Mayor, I was trying to go after Mr. Remy to get a sense of...
Okay, we got Worth, and then Chris wants to...
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Peterson, AKA Dan. It's been great to get to know you over the past year. And first, I want to thank you for coming today and the Foundation as well, because you started with the foundation, the history, the experience, a four-year public-private partnership between the City of Virginia Beach and the aquarium. And it's an incredible story. And none of us here at this table want to end that story at all. We want to improve it, make it sustainable. So that being said, between, I'm satisfied as I sit here. Last year, April, a year ago, I said, let's try to think outside the box. And I think that somewhat started this conversation, discussion, rightly so. And it, it's not easy. It's very complicated, because it is a partnership, it's a lot of money, and we've got to get this right. So I, I think where we are today, your foundation is incredible. The amount of experience, relationships, and history on that foundation, many are in this room and outside of the room, and they've also donated a lot of their personal money. With the ability of you all to raise money, the ability of us to work with you, I'm satisfied. And I think to address the timeline, I'm, I'm just to put that at this out there, perhaps a year, we do stop and not pause, stop where we are, and work hand in hand, rolling our sleeves up, and working this out. I'm satisfied. We, we can get there. And can I ask council to, to do this today? Because I think you're looking for head nods to, to stop where we are and, and go forward.
I, I think a year is a reasonable timeline to make substantial progress towards the goal of what you all are looking for.
Okay, Chris, and then Patrick.
All right. Just a direct question. Is the, is the Foundation opposed to this RSNS that we took direction on? Because a lot of what we're talking about, and again, I didn't support this, and now I know the mayor's going to call text and nod and go along with what the paper said we were going to do. But I'm, I'm a little confused, and it takes a little bit to get me confused. It seems like a lot of the things we're asking to do, we told the public we were going to do through this. And I can just, I mean, let me just read the key tasks. And we were led by our staff that hired these subject matter experts to guide us, because my concern is, and I may not be here in a year, or I may be here in a year, is what do we do in a year? We don't have any subject matter experts. We were told, depend on the professional staff, they're going to guide us. And here we have here, these are just the key tasks we were, we were given, and then we told the public we were going to do before the recess meetings took place. Site visit to aquarium and related facilities, we knew that took place. Discussions with city and foundational leadership, we know that took place. Creating baseline financial model for aquarium. So here I am, listening to my colleagues saying, we're going to be able to handle this internally. But I've heard in the past, we don't have enough time, we got to have the festival task force. I don't know how we're going to do that. So who's going to create that financial baseline model? Is that staff? Is that the Foundation? Because we hired this company to do it. We're going to define expectations on alternative partnership outcomes. It sounds like the Foundation wants to get rid of the third party and just talk about the city and the Foundation working together.
I'm, I'm not saying that.
Okay, no? All right. So one-on-one discussions with potential operators, that's taking place. I don't know if we're going to develop terms on a MOA. We don't have any evaluation of the partners and scorecards, which we, again, told the public we were going to do. So we could understand, because today you informed me when you said that the consistent variable amongst your discussions was the 501(c)(3) concern with those partners. And I've visited Ripley.
That's a core concern, yeah.
I've visited Ripley, I understand how their operation model is, and then recommend next steps.
And that core concern was driven by, if there was a potential business model that worked with a third-party operator, that was driven by the third-party operators that were brought in, said that they would need to own the assets. That was very consistent. And so for us, from the Foundation perspective, we need to have an understanding of what does that look like.
So I'm, I'm just confused about this part. And do you think the Foundation and the city can accomplish all this without a third-party consultant?
I, I, I wasn't involved in any of those discussions, so I really can't opine on that. Everything you've just addressed, I feel like is, is, is city, was city direction. And, and at that point in time, the Foundation wasn't involved with the engagement of RSNS.
And then lastly, it sounds like what you presented today is that you all want to do another study, similar to, I guess, what they were going to do, but we were going to chip in 50,000. And so is that, Patrick, who we're going to...
That's, that's a structural, that's a structural assessment to determine what is our timeline? What is the actual useful life of our three core exhibits, which are the exhibits that have shown, they're the most popular, they're the largest, they've shown the most deterioration. And so it's defining what is that scope, and what is that timeline, which ultimately defines what is our sense of urgency.
And our commitment would be, if we went this way, you want us to chip in half of that?
Well, I want to be very clear. This is, it's a city asset. And as a partnership, the Foundation stepped up to support half of that.
All right. Thank you.
Contractually, our, our, our commitment is, is $0.00. We have, we have no legal obligation to pay for any of that. But we're a good partner. We recognize our assets are very, very intertwined. It's very, very complex as to what's quote unquote city, what's quote unquote foundation. And so we feel it's appropriate that we should incur some of that cost for that as a structural assessment. And I think it's only fair.
Thank you, Dan.
Patrick.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just want to get a sense if there's an indication of support from a majority of council for us to kind of pivot and move towards what's been discussed here. And the way I see that, it would be city staff and the council liaisons working together with the aquarium foundation and aquarium staff, on what it would look like for the, to explore a myriad of different things. Primarily, A, getting a clearer sense of the cities and found, and the cities and the Foundation's financial information, get a more baseline, more baseline information on what it actually takes to fully operate all functions of the aquarium, including the Foundation's component. For us to work together on a comprehensive assessment of the Virginia Aquarium assets, including our assets and also their exhibits, and for us to work collaboratively on lobbying the federal government and the state to see if there'll be ways to generate additional support from federal or state dollars to help mitigate some of the costs that the taxpayers are experiencing. And just want to get a general sense of council's supportive of staff moving in that direction.
Does anybody disagree with that, Barbara?
I really have to see something in writing.
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't mind bringing forward, I can bring forward a resolution for y'all to consider at the next voting meeting.
I may not have heard something that you said, so I really want to see it in writing, so I know what I'm saying, I'm agreeing to it.
Yep. So Councilmember Henley, I was saying, would council be opposed to me bringing forward a resolution for council to consider at your next voting meeting?
If we're going to do it in the future, we're not doing it as we sit here saying, this is our direction.
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Let's bring forward a resolution. That way, we can even have some further discussion.
We've made that mistake before, and I don't want to repeat it. So it's not what, what we think we've heard here. We're going to see a resolution in writing.
Right. Amelia, then we got to move on.
And just quickly, with what you're mentioning, a councilman failure, so we're kind of throwing that out?
That's what I'm hearing from you.
We need to know.
I think it, I think it varies. So I think this work is go past phase one, right? So it's likely we stop at phase one and don't go any further. But it could possibly mean that after council supports a resolution, if the aquarium foundation's on board, it could be...
We could come together to RSNS together and ask them, how can you work out, can you work out different models for all parties' best interest?
Yep, yeah.
So what, what are some models for the city? What are some models for the Foundation? What are some models for the city and the Foundation? What are some models for the city and the Foundation and a third party? What are some models for the city and a third party? To, to really determine, there's a finite scope that, that, that is going to be viable. And the finite scope, it's not going to be 10 different options. I, I, I can assure you that. I've worked on thousands of business transactions. We've got other bankers on the team. We understand the numbers. And so this scope, it's, it's going to come down to a couple different potential solutions. It, it's not going to be 10, or, or five.
That's what I was asking, because we're going to pay these people something for what they're doing. And we have the, now the 50 that just been mentioned as splitting. So how are we going to handle, those are two pots of money, or we're just going to...
Those, those are uncovered. So we, it's either we stop the scope here, and stop where, and they don't get paid anything any further, or if the Foundation and the city staff agrees that we need an expert to help us think this thing out, we could mutually enter into an agreement here, similar to how we talked about what we're going to do with the assessment of the facilities.
Okay.
And there are funds, there's a aquarium planning, programming, CFP budget that's already appropriated, that these funds could come from as well. That's already been appropriated over the years from the city as well. So we would share all that information. Likely if council supports this resolution, the aquarium foundation, Dan and I will probably work on a MOU that will get shared with multiple parties for, before we enter it, we'll make sure that you all see a copy of it, to see if we get any feedback.
At my pleasure.
Okay. And I want to thank you for coming. And if I could just say a couple things to the Foundation. We want to sincerely thank you for all your efforts. And be assured, let's look at the effects of that as we look forward to the future. You've been talking about decades of commitment and working together with the city, with many, many council members along the way, including my friend John Earn from way back. It goes back even farther. But looking even back a little bit, let's celebrate the successes that we've had recently. You know, just last year, didn't we do a ribbon cutting for that wonderful new extension out there, of where commitment, where, you know, fantastic, where you got, where people can come and watch surgeries on the animals and things, continuing the, the thing. And then also with the governor coming for that magnificent Stranding Center that we did. But going forward, be assured, I, I think you're hearing from our council and our management, the same level of commitment, quite frankly, if not more, going forward. Yes, we have challenges, but they are overcomeable. And, but once again, I think now that we have the foundation of the dialogue and understanding, we're going to be able to move forward and get to yes on this. So I just want to thank you all very much for your continued commitment. And thank you.
And let's also recognize former councilwoman, well, she will hear it on the air, because she's another who's very strong about the Foundation and being part of that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you for your commitment.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Do we take a five-minute break till we clear the room? Clear, five-minute break? Start getting ready to reconvene.
All right, so. All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, at the request, mayor of yourself, we're going to have Hampton Roads Alliance come and give the city council a presentation of some changes they've made in their organization, but also some of their priorities that they've been focused on, focusing on of late. So the next place you'll hear from me will be Doug Smith, and he also has his chief business officer, Jared Chalk, who'll be here to talk about the programming for Hampton Roads Alliance.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and members of councils. Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, it's always a pleasure to be with you all. And last time we were here, we talked about the Eastern Virginia Regional Industrial Facilities Authority. I'm thrilled you all joined, and I'm going to talk about that really briefly today. But I know Mr. Remick is, is your, your rep, and Mr. Scholman and Amanda Jarrett served there as well. And I'm, I'm really confident that organization is going to be one of the most important regional organizations we have within the next three or four years. So I look forward to coming back and telling you about the progress there. But today, I, I don't really, I do not have an ask of you, right? As, as Mr. Duhaney said, really want to give you an update, and I want to give you something to think about, okay? And so I would, I want to tell you where we see Hampton Roads relative to regional economic development. And I would argue that this is our regional moment. And we're going to talk to you about some of the trends that are taking place nationally, and how those trends really play well for us as a region, and I think play well for Virginia Beach as a community, if we are very deliberate, if we are very collaborative, and if we're very focused. And we'll talk to you a little bit about what that means. Jared Chalk is going to come up, as Mr. Duhaney said, our chief business development officer. Part of why I want Jared in front of you is we've, we've got a really good team, and we've got some sharp folks on that team, and none of them sharper and doing more interesting things than Jared. And so I want him to have some exposure to you all, and you all to have some exposure to him. What he's going to talk to you about, and I won't steal his thunder, but what's happening in this country from an economic development standpoint? If you think about it, we are remilitarizing, re-industrializing, and decarbonizing all at once. And we're doing it with very little guidance and a tremendous amount of public and private money flowing into those initiatives. And we think when the dust settles, you're going to have a very different economic order from, from a regional economy standpoint than you do today. And again, we think the, the region is really well positioned for that. So Jared's going to come up here in just, in just a second and talk to you about what that really means. Talk to you about some things, the Australia, UK, US trilateral agreement that's a, has a potential to have a really big impact on this region. The, the country has its first defense industrial strategy that was released last year. He's going to talk to you a little bit about that. Then I'm going to come back and talk to you about something that we're going to put together called a regional investment playbook. And I'll tell you what I think those components will start to look like. And, and I'm going to put some thoughts out to you for Virginia Beach, and where I think Virginia Beach could play in that. And, and again, just trying to be a little bit thought provoking. And this is a conversation that we've been having for the better part of this year, right? We started, and I just want you to, and y'all, many of you have been at a number of these events. We kicked off this conversation with a, a regional governor's panel, a governor's, governor's panel with Ralph Northam and Bob McDonnell and George Allen. If y'all know this, because two of them live in Virginia Beach. But the fact that we have three former governors living here is a real opportunity to, to get some insights. And we brought them in and, and told them what I just told you, asked them their perspective, what happened when they were in office, what they would do if they were in office today. And Mayor Dyer, I know you were there, that was a, really a great discussion. We followed that up with a discussion with our board, led by Colin Glass, who is the head of supply chain for Newport News Ship, who also serves on our board. And Newport News Ship will play a really big role in everything that we're talking about. Some of you were at our annual meeting, where Bruce Katz, who is, and I'd really encourage you to look him up. He's written a book called New Localism, he has a newsletter called New Localism, works out of Drexel University. Frankly, we've hired him, and Jared will talk a little bit about that, and I'll talk about it some more. But kind of had some really interesting conversation at our annual meeting in February. All along the way, we've been briefing the regional economic development team, the red team, so the economic development directors and the utilities and different folks. And then we've had conversations at the EB RIFA board, also with the workforce council and some other folks. We had a meet, an event in June with Mayor Oliver Copert, who is the mayor of South Yorkshire County in England, which is where the Sheffield Foundry is, foundry that dates back to the 1600s, big supplier for Newport News Ship. And the mayor and I signed an agreement that we would cooperate on economic development opportunities that will, frankly, will be presented through this AUKUS program. And Bruce gave an initial summary of the work that he's done, that we're going to talk to you about in a little more detail. And we've also briefed all of my peers that run all the different regional organizations. And obviously, we're here with you all today. You're the first council we've talked to, and that's really a function of, of Patrick and Jared talking and realizing what was happening, and him wanting y'all to hear this. Frankly, a little bit early in that everything's in sort of draft form right now. We've also been briefing at the state level, the secretaries of commerce and trade, labor, and veteran affairs on a, on a monthly basis, and working real closely with, again, Sean Avery and the Hampton Roads Workforce Council and the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. So I'm going to ask Jared to step up for a few minutes and run you through some of these trends, and then I'll come back and tell you how I think they apply.
Thank you, Doug. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. So I'm going to frame the conversation and talk a little bit about the region and, and just what Doug said. You know, from a starting standpoint, you know, you probably saw this, we're, we're the number one state for business in Virginia. And that's a testament to a lot of things. CNBC ranks, you know, it's a very stable environment. So I think that's our platform, right? As we think about, you know, who we are as a region, we're in the top state for business. And a lot of regions, a lot of cities would, you know, would die for that, right? Our corporate tax rate has not changed since 1978 at 6%. You know, that's a very stable environment for businesses to operate. But it also provides us with, you know, access to the DOD, access to Washington DC. You know, I'll talk about a lot of those assets and strengths we've got in Hampton Roads, and how that, that synergy is really, really beneficial for us. So really, as you think about Hampton Roads, right? We are the center of Virginia's world-class maritime and defense ecosystem. You know, with, with 2 million people, you know, 15,000 exiting military every year, about half of them staying here. 200 international companies, you know, just a two and a half hour drive south of DC. You know, this is who we are. We are home to the port of Virginia. And, and I think we need to lean into our strengths. You know, for, for years, we were diversifying away from, you know, wanting to diversify away. With the amount of federal spending that's coming, I think it's, it's time to diversify within, right? And so we'll talk, talk more about that. But as you think about, you know, the scale of really what we've got, we truly are the largest concentration of military assets on the planet. And so with the world's largest naval base, with NATO's headquarters in North America, you know, one of two places that's building nuclear-powered aircraft carriers, we're bill, are, are nuclear-powered submarines, the only place that's building nuclear-powered aircraft carriers in Newport News. You know, you look at some of the bases, and I, and I'll show you a map here in a second, but, you know, Joint Base Langley-Eustis, you know, the, the 5th Coast Guard District, really, from New Jersey to, to South Carolina, including Washington DC, you know, is included in that. You know, everything you've got here in, in Virginia Beach with Oceana being the East Coast master jet base. We really have a collection of, of catalytic assets in, in the military. And if you look at our installations across the regions, there, you know, there's 19 military installations and 120,000 active and reserved military that, that are, that are here. You know, Doug, when he, when he talks a little bit about the, the, moving to the playbook, he'll, he'll talk about, you know, where we fit in, in, in the country in terms of scale and, and federal spending. And we really are one of the leaders, you know, in, in the country, if not, if not the world. One of the really things that I, I think also sets us apart, right? You, you have other, other parts of the country that have bases. But every military, major military unit is here, and the decision makers are here. So if you look at just that, that image there, you've got NATO's Allied Command Transformation, you've got US Joint Forces Command, US Fleet Forces Command, US Air Force Air Combat Command, you know, the Marine Corps Forces Command. These are decision makers at the, at the federal level, at the military level, that all are housed here. So the customer, as we think about the supply chain and, and trying to attract, you know, the customer, the customer is here, the decision makers are here in Hampton Roads. So, you know, as Doug mentioned, we, we see the world and what we're viewing as a new disorder, right? If, if you think about the last four years and what's happened in the country, you know, everything from COVID-19 to some unprecedented federal spending. You know, you had the, you know, rising inflation, we've seen, you know, the wars in Ukraine, you know, Israel, rising tensions with China and the Indo-Pacific, renewed calls for, for racial justice. You've seen the climate crisis, you know, come, come to a head. And then remote work on top of that. It, it has fundamentally changed, I think, the world. And so, you know, that economic order has been catalyzed by federal spending. And so Doug said, you know, as Doug said, looking back in the last year, we're also tailoring our events, looking at sort of what's happened. So the American Rescue, Rescue Plan, you know, 1.9 trillion dollars, followed by the, the Infrastructure Act, which was another 1.2 trillion dollars. The Chips and Sciences Act, the Inflation Reduction Act, which was really an act to, to position the US towards a, a green energy economy. All of those things have happened over the last few years. You, you layer a, an almost trillion-dollar defense budget, and then this AUKUS agreement on top of that, and they really intersect in Hampton Roads in, in a big way. So, you know, what we're trying to sort of say here is this, these changes, right? These disruptive forces have prompted catalyst for change, right? The US, at, at the federal level, realized we need more defense capabilities. There was a renewed importance on domestic manufacturing, ensuring that critical technologies, chips, were manufactured in the US. We saw the exposed vulnerability of, of global supply chains throughout the pandemic. And then you've got this overarching rapid commitment to decarbonize the economy and, and green the supply chain. So all of those things have led to what we believe is accelerated technology adoption in three sectors of remilitarization, reshoring, and decarbonization. And those, we believe, are going to translate into metros around the country, right? That are military metros, that's us, Tech Hub, us, climate-first mover, and what we're doing with wind and hydrogen, us, right? And a trading powerhouse here in the port of Virginia. So we are going to disproportionately, I think, benefit over the next decade if we can really lean into this spending and, and really tap into this as an economic development strategy. And so this, I think, you know, really, as you see it, Doug, I think, will, will answer this. This is where the playbook is headed. You know, what, the decision we must answer is where do we fit in this, this, this order, right? I think we have some strengths, and the playbook's going to identify those strengths, but really dive into, dive deep into that federal spending. Our core industries, and not that we're turning our back from any traditional industry in Hampton Roads, but really the core of who we are is the defense, knowledge work, and cyber, energy and systems, and transportation and logistics. And we think those are our core industries here in Hampton Roads. Somebody? Skip one. And so the national defense industrial strategy. So every year, the Pentagon delivers to the White House a national defense strategy. This is the first year that there's been a industrial strategy. And the reason is, they, they've realized how vulnerable our supply chains are, how vulnerable our workforce is. And so there's now a priority in there where the Department of Defense is, is saying, here's our strategy. And, and we believe, particularly with Hampton Roads and supply chains, we, we, this is a playbook for us as we move forward. So I'm going to talk to you about AUKUS. And AUKUS is a trilateral agreement between the Australia, Australia, the United Kingdom, and, and the US that's intended to promote free and open trade, particularly among military technologies, right? And, and you've probably heard that, if you've heard of AUKUS, a lot of what you've heard is around submarines, right? And, and that's one pillar to submarines. And, and just to put the, put it in sort of scale and scope for you, Newport News Ship is going to be building 20 submarines over the next 10 years. Each of, each of those are about $5 billion apiece. In addition, they're still building aircraft carriers. So you've got 5 billion times 20, the entire coastal offshore wind project for the region is a $9.8 billion project. So the scott, size and scale of the industrial sort of might that's going to be flowing through Newport News Ship is, is really unprecedented for the region, and I, I think unprecedented for the US. And so they've got to hire 21,000 people over the next five years. They're working all around the country, they're working really closely with the Hampton Roads Workforce Council to attract those people here. But they've got, you know, you've probably got, you know, you've probably seen BuildSubmarines.com, they sponsor a NASCAR, they're, the Navy, the federal, the federal government's putting, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars in this to shore up the workforce and attract those people here in the supply chain. But pillar two, I think, is less talked about right now, but it might actually be, you know, more beneficial in the region here, given all of our assets. And that is, you know, all of the sort of sensitive technologies, all of the things that sort of future wars will be fought with, right, unmanned systems, cyber, all of those things, and the sharing of those things. There's really, I'd say, a friend shoring that's going on between, you know, friendly countries in the defense industry. And so we're sharing a lot of technologies related to AUKUS pillar two in our joint capabilities. When you start to look at pillar two alignment, so you've got the submarines, you've got, we've got, you know, all of our military assets, and you look at all of the things around AI, you know, hypersonic missiles, quantum technologies, electronic warfare, we're also really well positioned in Hampton Roads to take advantage of a pillar two. And so pillar two is shortly following pillar one. But again, there's a ton of investment from both the Australian and UK government into these industries. Some of the assets that we've got, you know, in pillar two, you know, Jefferson Lab is a real gem for the region, the money that it's going to be going into that to create a high-performance data center, you've got, you know, everything that's happening with NASA and Langley in terms of, you know, putting a lander on Mars, you've got the HII Unmanned Systems Center for Excellence, you've got a Lockheed Martin Center for Excellence, you know, in Suffolk, you've got the Virginia Institute for Space Flight and Autonomy. And then what y'all are doing here, you know, with the ODU Institute of Data Science. I mean, that's an important, you know, player, and will be an important player as AUKUS II continues to play out. So that sort of sets the stage, right? I mean, we really are, you know, exporting global security from Hampton Roads. And so with that, I'll turn it back to Doug.
So with that backdrop, we engaged Bruce Katz and his team to do something for us, and that was to get us data, right? All this sounds interesting, but what's the data that supports it? So we wanted an analysis of all of the federal spending that takes place in Hampton Roads. Where is it spent? Where does it go? What leaks out of here? What are we not hanging on to? We asked him to really study the green supply chain and what it means to Hampton Roads. And then finally, there are these critical industries that the federal government is pouring a lot of money into. Where are our plays? Where are our opportunities? And this is where I really want you to, I've got about five more minutes, and I really want you to hear this and think through, what does this mean for Virginia Beach? And so if you look at, my slide, oops, what you're seeing is a deck, is a slide right out of about an 80-page report, and I'm not trying to give you the whole report, I just want to give you a couple of highlights. This part ain't going to surprise you. We have a remarkably robust public economy, right, primarily driven by defense contracts and positions us as among the leaders in the country, which you can't see in small print. Looking at that middle slide, about fifth one down, nobody is, to our knowledge, nobody's ever looked at federal spending at a regional level. You look at it at a city level, you look at it at a state level. The reason it's important, we've had, I would say, no less than 40 Australian companies in the market in the last six months, right? And in one case, we had 15 of them at one time at an event. And I asked, raise your hand if before you came over here, you'd heard of Hampton Roads. Two or three hands went up. How many of you had heard of San Diego? Everybody's hand went up, right? Because our, if you look on that right button, our scale gets diffused among Virginia Beach, Newport News, Norfolk, Portsmouth. Nobody looks at what's happening at a regional level. And so what we really want to understand is what's being spent and how do we lean into that? If you look at Virginia Beach, obviously, you lead the way with over $4 billion a year being spent here. That creates some real opportunities for us. But then I want you to look at the second piece, which is, "Early findings indicate that Hampton Roads is well-placed to capitalize on key projects related to nuclear, wind, and the grid." All right, so these, again, these are, this is the green supply chain. Those industries on that left box are the things that are, I would call it, say, in play, that are transitioning. And what we're trying to see is where are the opportunities for us, right? I believe that nuclear is where wind was 10 or 15 years ago. If you all, I'd urge you, if you're not, pay attention to what Dominion's going to release their Integrated Resource Plan here later this fall, right? And what we know it's going to say is the demand for energy is at a curve like this. It's going to double over the next 15 years. You can't meet that with renewables, you can't meet that with the current system. It's what the state has said, and all of the above approach is what it's going to take. You're not going to get there candidly without small nuclear reactors. You're not going to get there without nuclear. What we've got, we have a workforce that has been in that space for the last several decades, right? And we believe there's an opportunity for us to team up with Lynchburg, who has BWXT and Framatome, a couple of companies that are in this space in a big way, to help them work with Huntington Ingalls and really play, do some interesting things with nuclear. So I'd urge you to pay a lot of attention to that. We're going to need, candidly, we're going to need more engineers. Old Dominion and the other schools are going to have to crank out more engineers, and I'll come back to that. Wind, I tell you, wind is a, is a really a winning story for us. If you think about where we were four or five years ago, where we are today, you've got really the only budget, the only project off the coast that's on time and on budget, the largest one. We really have created a logistics hub at Portsmouth Marine Terminal, and now with the announcement of the LS Green Lake Project in Chesapeake, a $660 million project that's going to manufacture cable, we're becoming a manufacturing hub for wind. We need to get involved in the innovation that's around wind, and I'll come back to that toward the end. One that I'm less just knowledgeable about and comfortable with is this idea of the grid and the microgrid. But our grid is fragile, and there's going to have to be a lot of innovation that comes into that power grid, and there's no reason Hampton Roads couldn't play a part in all of that. And then you look at the third bucket, which is really these critical industries as identified by the Biden administration. We've got real advantages in cybersecurity and advanced energy efficiency technologies, right? And so if you think about that, cyber really is about, in large part, it's about the military. But I think what y'all have done with Old Dominion is really important, and is an opportunity for y'all to play a very significant role. And I don't expect y'all to be able to read that, but I'm going to read you the line out of those boxes on the right. All right, "It looks like we've got a good play in cyber and data. However, there's a need to develop a platform that strengthens academy industry connections and provides capital to move ideas to market." Energy efficiency, colleges are doing a great job of generating specialized talent, but there's still room for improvement in terms of university participation and innovation. And on advanced manufacturing, I'll come back to this on my last slide, "HII already offers a comprehensive range of unmanned solutions for defense, marine, and commercial applications," meaning they are in this space in a big way. So what happens next? We take this data, and we move from this articulation of an economic position and come up with a set of concrete projects. I don't know what that number is, probably five or six, around R&amp;D, workforce, infrastructure, that this region can get behind, that we can move forward. Line those projects up with the capital stack that is out there coming out of both the federal government and the private sector. The private sector is leaning into these spaces as well. And I'm going to read you this last bullet, because I think it's maybe the most important thing I'm going to say today, because this is where, this is the sort of, hey, we're positioned, but it's not automatic. "This is about graduating Hampton Roads from a region focused on the end assembly of sophisticated products, nuclear-powered submarines, offshore wind turbines, to one that participates more extensively in technological innovation in earlier parts of the supply chain." That's the transition that we have to make. What does that look like, maybe, for Virginia Beach? And this is Jared and I thinking, y'all may think very differently, right? But if you look at that bullet of Hampton Roads has that remarkably robust federal sector, that public economy, what you, and Ms. Wilson and I bumped into each other on the street not that long ago, right after y'all had passed the resolution on Oceana, that was really important for a lot of reasons. But it sent, the simplest to me is it sent a really strong message that we are a welcoming committee for the military, we are going to embrace the military, and I'm telling you, folks, this is where the opportunities are going to be for us. This is who we are. We are a maritime and defense economy. I've called on some of your defense contractors really recently. We've never played in the defense contracting space because we didn't feel like there was a role for us. There's a role for us in that space now in helping these folks. And I think for you all, there is a business expansion opportunity with some of these defense contractors that are in your market. Look at the green supply chain, you know, what are the opportunities there? You've already established yourself as a hub for wind. Now you've got to find, what does that mean, right? What is that opportunity? And it's, and I think with the things you're doing around resilience, there's resilience technologies, energy, battery technologies. We've talked, the city management, I've talked about this, surprisingly, you don't have a lot of land, right? So your opportunities really are going to have to be in some of these innovation spaces that really leverage some of these tools that you all are developing around cyber and energy. And that last one is really around the knowledge works in cybersecurity. I think, and you're doing it, but lean in hard on how that plays in the defense sector, how that plays in offshore wind and all these other spaces. And then a question that I would simply ask of you, because I haven't figured out how to leverage the regional ring. I haven't figured out how to really leverage these cables from an economic development standpoint. We've talked about this for a lot of years, but I think it's, and we've got some thoughts, but I think it's one that we have, we, I'm going to say, the region haven't done an adequate job yet, but I think it's an enormous opportunity for you all. So I'm going to close, I'd love any comments or questions. And if you, listen, if you say, man, I think you all are, you're on the wrong track, let us know that. But this is the track we're heading down, and we really want you all engaged and at the table. And along those lines, Mayor, you remember at our annual meeting at the Museum of Contemporary Arts a couple of years, year and a half ago, we invited as many council members as we could get it. But we did it kind of last minute, and we got about 25 from the region showed up. We're going to do that every other year. If you think about it, there are 102 of you, elected officials in Hampton Roads. Every two years, half of you run, right? That group changes all the time. And so every other year, we're, at our annual meeting, we're going to invite every elected official to come and get a little bit of a briefing on what's going on in economic development. So Mayor, I'd love for you to appoint somebody to work with me to help get your council and these other councils to really show up for a robust conversation there. So I guess I do have one to ask of you. But that's our thinking. Would love to get some reaction of if you feel like we're heading in the right direction, or you'd like to see us do something different.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I just, I think my question is more rhetorical, unless you have a response for it. Because, so when I lecture on the economy, we look at the Hampton Roads economy in my classroom. And one of the articles we start with is from 2016. It's a Washington Post article that talks about Hampton Roads has relied on military spending for too long, and that our reliance, or some might say overreliance on federal military funding puts us in a very vulnerable position. We're at the whim of whatever the federal expenditure is on spending. And so I think one of the criticisms for our region has been diversifying our economy, shifting towards more privatization, less public reliance. So I'm, that's where my mind is with this, that, you know, so we do and we have had a robust public economy. And is that still the direction we should be going? That word reliance, because if that changes, what position does that put us in?
Yeah. It's an outstanding question. And I got to tell you, I was one of the people that walked around here for 20 years saying, we need to diversify away from this stuff. And people like David White of the Maritime Association, and folks at the port kept saying, you don't understand, this is, this is who we are. This is our DNA. We are a maritime industrial economy. And it's true. And the only thing I can compare it to is I was down here when y'all were starting to lean in on participatory sports. And I always remember this consultant saying, everybody wants this sport or that sport. Everybody wants lacrosse, right? But if you don't have a lacrosse culture, if you don't have lacrosse coaches, and you don't have lacrosse volunteers to show up, you can want to host all of the lacrosse tournaments you want, you're not going to be a community that can do that. I'm going to tell you, this, this, it's sort of figure out who you are and be that really intentionally. This is who we are. And I think Jared made a really interesting comment, which is diversify within this space. So what are the really interesting things that are happening at Huntington Ingalls around submarines and aircraft carriers? It's nuclear energy, right? They're already in that space. Well, let's help them transition to nuclear energy and small modular reactors that can be placed around the region that can help us meet that energy demand. So it's, I don't, I no longer view it as an either-or. I think it's a, it's a yes, we lean in, and. And the other part of the and is, this is where we're going for the foreseeable future. And by foreseeable future, I mean decades. We live in a belligerent world. And if you look at the Indo-Pacific, and that's where a lot of the attention's going to be, and I heard a Navy captain stand up and say, China has been expanding its empire for centuries. Don't think, why would you think that that is going to change today? So we are going to be in conflict. Jared said it, it's friend shoring, it's working with our allies to make sure that they've got the assets. What you're seeing in Ukraine, a lot of that is just how, what we went through in terms of the munitions and sending, you know, $100 million missiles, when you could have sent drones and different things. Everything is going to change in terms of how we fight these battles. So I think your question is an excellent one, but I think it's, I think it's a yes and.
Thank you, Mayor Dyers. Specifically to Virginia Beach, we hear so much about economic development. We invest millions of dollars in economic development, yet our burden on homeowners in terms of budget and revenue hasn't moved in 30 years. Still 8614 for residential commercial. How, what do you, how do we get these investments to actually hit the bottom line? Because many residents in District 8, which happens to be a relatively affluent, many residents in District 8, which happens to be relatively affluent, they don't see these investments that we're making returning to the general fund.
Right.
So yes, it expands town center. Yes, it expands the oceanfront. Yet I was just talking with Councilor Mimick today, and our hotel years, it's a down year, but we're spending $12 million in advertising.
Right.
When does the rubber hit the road?
Yeah, I think a couple of things. One, I probably should have talked about tourism, because I do think tourism is a piece that y'all can and should continue to lean in on, and it's part of what makes you unique and different. I think this, again, I think it's looking at these opportunities and figure out, where do you play? If you can come in and we can get you all in the cybersecurity space, continue to get you in a really meaningful way, that is really high-paying jobs for residents that can live in, y'all wards are District 8. I think it is, but it's being very deliberate. And I'm going to, I'm going to own this. I don't think the region has been as targeted as we're going to be going forward, right? And that is, we're going to continue, if somebody brings up food and beverage opportunity, fantastic. We're not going to go spend a significant amount of time chasing that industry. We're going to spend a significant amount of time, we know that dozens of Australian companies have to move over here, get in the supply chain for Huntington Ingalls, Newport News Ship, because by 2040, they need to be able to build nuclear submarines in Australia. That feels like a very specific, clean opportunity for us. I had one other thought, it'll come back to me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Doug, Jared. Thank you very much for coming and for your work, not only for Virginia Beach, but for our regional economy. Because I know we're kind of running a little late, I just want to raise this point as just something that hit me, is our power needs relative to our current capability. Some of the projections over time were extremely startling to hear. And I would love maybe at a different time for us to maybe delve into that issue and how we as locality have a role in growing our capability in that regard, and what the region is doing to help grow our capabilities there as well. Because to hear that we need, what, double the amount of power and what?
Next 15 years. And I suspected it accelerates even faster than that.
And I know that there are, you know, where I suspect we probably see it at the local level, is that translates into land use issues for us.
Right, right.
Those can be extremely difficult. We have to be thoughtful in terms of where some of these assets are being placed and how they impact communities and such. So I would, and if any other colleagues are interested in this, I would love to get a little bit deeper dive on that issue.
I would love to be involved in that conversation. We have a Regional Energy Steering Committee. We have created a Regional Energy Roadmap. I think y'all have seen this, I know some of you have. On September 18th, we are co-hosting a half-day summit with the Virginia Chamber on this very issue. It's an infrastructure summit focused on energy and the implications. And part of what we're talking about, Sherman, is this dynamic of regional energy being really driven by local land use decisions, right? So we think that Steering Committee, after doing a lot of work, said the most important thing we can do is educate the policymakers about what's going to be coming into your chambers. So I'd love to be involved in that conversation.
Okay, work.
Thank you, Mayor Dyers. I'll try to be brief as well. I do have three comments, so thank you.
Mr. Smith, aka Doug, and Mr. Chalk, aka Jared, thank you for your time and presentation. Let me first start off and say, you all know that I have been somewhat critical over the years, because I'm in your space, of how the alliance proceeds, and done a great job. But I think I think this is absolutely brilliant. I've never seen anything like this in my now 39 years. We've focused on the port, focused on defense, but not in the holistic, never knew US foreign policy would come down to the city council level, but, but it's true and we need this leadership. And so how we get from here to the next steps is really important, but I really applaud this and congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm always a fan, but I'm even more of a fan. So that being said, how does this translate into local assets in terms of the two pillars of assets? The first one is more of an industrial waterfront or industrial use. The second one is, like you just said, pillar two is more of an office oriented. So as a city, as we evaluate land use decisions and plans, you know, we're going to be short on industrial land, but more available for office and it may be more suited for our population and our strengths. And this is all playing to our regional strengths. So how do you see, how does this translate into local, we're not, this is not retail per se, although more business generates more retail, but you're saying, what I'm hearing you say is we can't, there is space, a need for office as well as industrial.
And so, and keep in mind, I know we threw a lot at you, AUKUS is a piece of defense, which is a piece of everything that I'm telling you about. I kind of look at, and so what I tried to do with this slide is say, we're looking at defense, really deal with the federal spending, we're looking at the green supply chain and we're looking at these critical infrastructures. These are some quick thoughts of what I think could be opportunities for Virginia Beach. But this is where, so what's going to happen is we're going to publish this thing shortly. We've got a rough draft, we're getting it back to Bruce Katz. Mayor, the board will see it mid-September, kind of be the first one to see it officially. Then the next step is to create this playbook. And we'll take several months to say, all right, what do we, now we, now we know the data, what do we do with this data? And what I'm hoping is these communities will almost, not almost, in parallel, be having these conversations about, all right, if this, this is what's happening, what's playing to our strengths? We think these are some of them. Again, we called on one of your defense contractors this week. It was unbelievable, I had no idea what all they were doing and how they're growing and what they're going to do. And so I think there is a, there's a very simple, we've said to Toy Hunter, who runs business expansion for us, 25, you're going to focus on defense contractors. You're going to, and you're going to work with the localities to help them figure out who those defense contractors are and go call on them. So again, I think you're already leaning in on cyber. I think that's a huge opportunity in that knowledge economy. Anything, what am I forgetting, am I forgetting anything?
Yeah, I would say Virginia Beach is internationally greater, right? Assets like that, that allow companies to come here and set up, they're, as Doug said, they're coming, right? We know they're coming. I think where they cluster to start is really important. So we want them to cluster, you know, particularly the Australian and UK companies in Hampton Roads. I think between here and DC, you're going to see a lot of that activity. I would also say, you know, when I started the alliance a couple of years, two years ago now, I had a presentation with Select USA. And so one of my first presentations, I went in and it was Hampton Roads, it was Atlanta, it was New Jersey, and it was Austin, right? And I gave our pitch, right? Hampton Roads, I talked about the airport, talked about this, and Atlanta came in and just, the airport, you know, smacked us down. Austin had 20,000 startups last year, right? And so I came out of that and some of this is, I was like, we need a different pitch, right? Who are we, right? And so we, and then, and that led all these conversations to this. And I think this is really, like, that's exactly, we're leaning into this in a big way. And I think we're going to be very intentional about how we attract these companies.
Okay, and let's try to wrap up.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, the EV RIFA, the sort of, hey, how do we, that, the, that authority that you all join is going to give you the opportunity to invest in projects in other communities, right? And get the benefits, the tax revenues from those. So that's another place to be.
I'm, I'm passing.
Okay, Jennifer.
Just really quickly, how's the coordination with the higher ed institutions for workforce development? So this kind of like focus, because it takes a while to get programs that can go if we don't have them already.
I think it's really good. If you haven't had Sean Avery in here lately, I'd really encourage you. We call ourselves the flip side of the coin. They, their, their budget through federal funding has increased tenfold. He's got a $67 million budget, all this, so he paid for half this study we're doing. So he and I are joined the hip. Candidly, he's closer to the higher ed folks than we are, but I went to, Mayor, you're at his board meetings. He's created something called the Regional Maritime Training Center that coordinates the regional, the training centers from here to Petersburg, within 100 mile radius around all this stuff. I think the Workforce Council has become the model in the state, if not the country. We had folks from the Gulf Coast up here last week studying what we're doing around all this stuff, but particularly what Sean's doing.
Okay, Doug, thanks very much. And let's just remember, we got Subsea Cables coming and we got Broadback coming and that could be a game changer.
That's right. Thank you all.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay, next up.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, at this time, at the request of several members on the council, we're going to give council an overview of the Sea-Tac Park, including, including information on how the park can be updated and the costs associated with it.
Thank you. We remember, we recognize some very, not good members of the Sea-Tac community. Thank you for coming.
Great. Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of council, Manager Duhany, City Attorney Stiles. It's good to be here. Thank you very much. And we're, again, we're here to talk about Sea-Tac Park and the potential to really give Sea-Tac Park a much needed facelift. Really quick to talk about existing conditions. I think we're all familiar with this park. It's a gem. It's been around a long time. This is one of the earliest parks in the city system. So if you aren't aware, Red Wing Park was the very first city park, 1966. And here you have Sea-Tac Park that came along right after that in 1970. It's roughly five acres, right along Bird Neck Road. Currently it has a playground. That playground is from 2011, so it is slated to be replaced next year. We'll talk about that in a second. It does have a basketball court. It has, has an older baseball field and a, and a small gravel parking lot. So the question becomes, what could, what could happen with Sea-Tac Park with an infusion of investment to revitalize this city asset? So for $3 million, really we could give this a much needed facelift. Some of the things that have come to our attention that are strongly desired by the community are some very basic amenities. And these things are a paved parking lot, indoor bathrooms, right? Large shelters for gathering spaces where people can really enjoy the park and get together, and maybe some other type of, types of minor, small recreational amenities. Well, just to do that type of investment would really cost roughly $3 million. You can see the breakdown. Don't hold us to those figures. Those are ball parks based on current estimates that we receive for similar amenities in other areas of the city. So you can see how that $3 million could be spent. And if such a reinvestment in the park were to be made, we would really be looking at at least a three to three and a half year process. That's just how long it takes to go through a public input process, to develop a master plan, to put that out to bid with construction drawings and then construct. And so with that being said, the question becomes how, if city council would like to make a reinvestment in the park, could it be paid for? Kevin Chadlier is in the audience, so this information comes from Budget. Of course, we do know it's very early in the fiscal year, so there's really some questions upon what is the city's fund balance right now? I believe that's not known at this time until the books are wrapped up on the, on the previous fiscal year. Budget did supply a list of various different funds that could be considered or discussed by council for redirection. Another option would be to look at the yearly allocation of Parker Rec CIP projects. But just so you know, all of those projects are currently in the works or currently being funded, so that would require taking a fair share of those away. And you can see the current projects that are either in design or funded or planned in the current fiscal year. So there are options for you, of course, but each come with pros and cons and choices and consequences. And so with that, I know I went through it really quick, but happy to take any questions.
Any questions at this point? Amelia.
I'd just say this is important. It's very important. This is one of our oldest historic African American district. And they've been kind of trying to do what they can with very little. So I'm glad Councilman Remick has brought this up front and center. Because people come in now and even with the little brochure I put about them and others, people want to go and see where they are. And most of the time, if they have something, it's either in the recreation center, which is also small. But coming out here, I've been out there, as you know, we have one of our murals on at the front from the VA ACC. But we have to park in the gravel, there's no bathroom, there's no shelter from the elements. And these are just basic, basic needs. So I think we need to really look at this. Thank you for bringing me here.
Okay, Michael, then Josh.
Thank you. I want to agree with my friend and colleague to my left, Dr. Ross Hammond, in sharing my support for this project. I've been a member of council since 2019. And each and every budget hearing that I have participated in, members from the spine community have come and let us know that they wanted to improve the facilities at their park and have watched as the city has proceeded to address issues in other areas. Part of that is because there's a vast portfolio of needs in the community. But the other part of it is that we need to meet these needs. I don't represent the district where this is located, District 6. One of the critiques of the district system has been that, you know, we wouldn't necessarily, that we'd be advocates for our district, and I definitely am an advocate for District 3, including Mount Trashmore and all the other fine parks we have there. Sea-Tac Park is historic and the Sea-Tac neighborhood is one of the very special neighborhoods of Virginia Beach. And I think the requests that are coming are very reasonable and long overdue. And I would either, I would even add to that, and if I could, I'd like to compliment my friend, Councilman Remick, because this area has been represented by a variety of individuals even since I've been here, since 2019. And as I mentioned, each and every of those budget hearings, we've had advocates from the Sea-Tac community let us know that they need those. And this is the first time that I've ever participated in an actual presentation that seeks to address this issue. And I think the Sea-Tac community is deserving of so much credit and continuing to be an advocate, so I applaud you. But I also want to credit Councilman Remick with actually being, being, leading an initiative to create a plan for us to consider, being a great advocate for the Sea-Tac community. So I think this is fantastic. I look forward to working through the details, but it's time for us to respond to this community concern and community request. And thank you, Councilman Remick.
Okay, Josh and then Ross.
Sure. Mr. Kirschman, I just want to briefly echo everything you just said. I wholeheartedly support this, long overdue. I know there's history with the area in question in terms of previously us having taken some for a road expansion, I guess, in the vicinity, so, and I applaud you, Councilman, for bringing it forward and would, would look forward to a recommendation on how best to, how best to resource this ask. So thank you very much, everybody, for coming as well.
Okay, Roseanne.
Thank you for this presentation. And Michael's been on this since 2019. I've been there a little bit longer than that and we still have not had anything like this to really honor the residents of Sea-Tac and the historic nature of it. But more than historic, I think it's, I think it's a real need. There's really not a park that's close by. And, you know, we've got a lot of parks all over the city and we've been named, as you know, the best parks and rec department in the whole country. And so I think it's really time for this need in this area to be addressed. And we can't do everything that I wish we could have done for the Sea-Tac community, but this is attainable. And I'm hoping that this will give a lift, to let them know that we really have, was listening to them over the years and we do care about them. And I think it's great, as Michael said, that Councilman Remick brought this forward. I think it's a great idea. Thank you all for being here.
Okay, first, thanks, Mayor Dyer. I just wanted to clarify, we had Donnie Gregory, Sea-Tac Civic League President, with us today. And he was sworn in recently, so we just, not just members, but we actually do have the president.
We appreciate him coming. Thank you. Barbara.
Working on an overall collection of all the needs that you have because there are so many backlog needs in parks and rec. Where does that all stand?
So our park needs master plan, which you heard the consultants, they came, I believe, in April and presented, so that gave you a full picture of the ballpark 300 need for the entire park system excluding rec centers. That was just the parks. We'll have the final plan here very soon. How to prioritize those, those needs is, there's some, quite honestly, some subjectivity to that in terms of some places have unique characteristics such as historical value, such as the need based on population around them, based on historical investments or disinvestments. So there's lots to take into account. I will tell you, though, that this would serve one major need, and that is even our consultant talked about, when it comes to future investments, to think about or consider investing in community wide assets first, as opposed to the smaller neighborhood parks. And really what we're considering here is taking what has been historically classified internally on the city level, taking what has been classified as a neighborhood park and converting it into a community park with community level amenities where larger groups can gather, so you have parking lots and bathrooms. And so this does really help kind of hone in on that aspect of the master plan consultants that said, when you look at future investments, whether that's some of our larger undeveloped parcels, that would be beautiful, community parks in the future, those community park assets tend to and can have more bang for the buck. While they are more expensive to initially build, the maintenance, I mean, we're already maintaining this park, because you get so much more use out of the park, if you look at something called cost per person served, when you have a lot more people using it, your cost per person serve dramatically goes down and you're getting more return on the investment. And so this does kind of meet that direction that really says to think about investing in community assets prior to or maybe in front of neighborhood assets, although those are very important too, because things happen at the neighborhood level and everybody wants a park and needs a park within a 10 minute walk time, which is a national initiative. So you have these competing priorities, but this does help meet certainly identified need in the master plan.
It seems like we have some policy decisions to make with parks. And I know, what was that other phrase that got thrown in there? What if we had a parks bond referendum? So I guess that's still an option out there too, that you were looking at as an overall possibility?
I'll defer to the city manager, but always an option for council to consider in the future.
And all of these things have been being talked about because I know there's a very big need that comes at parks and rec overseas, because then they also have all that big area of open space that has been acquired, that has not had anything done to it. And so it's a pretty big issue. I think we really have to look at all of these things and decide how we're going to spend a limited amount of money. But I guess that's going to be a part of what we're going to be doing as a part of maybe this budget cycle.
As part of the CIP retreat, council is going to look at its existing CIPs and some other needs that are under the horizon and hopefully give some direction on how best for staff to tackle that from a financing, financing and funding standpoint.
It's a big, big, big issue.
Okay, Amelia.
Well, sometimes you have things like to say the president's privilege. And this is one thing that I look at as council privilege, that something like this is important for this community. And not only is that the precedent, but he is a recording artist, right? The Gregory Brothers, historically, yeah. So 50 years. So all of that plays, sometimes you got to weigh the pros and the cons. And you're looking at five acres, you're looking at the generation of young people coming in, having somewhere to go when they have their reunions. their reunions. Because even in Burton Station, we have to usually use somebody's land to do that whole. And people come. Can you imagine the group, the historic value? As you know, I'm a historic value nut about this, and I'm going to push for this. Thank you.
It's work. So, Sabrina, let's get, we're in it. We'll thank you for work.
Thank you. And so my head's, my head is off to the Sea-Tac community, especially the leadership of the Civic League, because the last six years that I've been here, I have always seen them come out to advocate for the needs of their community. This is a good start. There are other amenities that they need. And I've certainly been advocating and supporter for all of those priorities. And so I would definitely like to make sure we start with this program and make sure it's funded, because it is certainly very important to the community. And they have been very tenacious in their advocacy for the community. And I think now it's time that we move forward and make sure that they get the things that they need for their community. But again, this is just a start. I remember the community coming down, leadership coming down every year, asking for amenities for their park, for their rec center, and not seeing very much support around the table. So it's good to hear the support around the table today. So, thank you.
Work.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, Councilwoman Wood for saying what I just, I'm hearing, and that's support around the table. Mr. Kirschman, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate what everyone's saying. And so moving forward, let me also say this, this is currently a neighborhood park, but with this additional investment, it could be a community park. And so, and thank you, Mr. Gregory and others from the Sea-Tac community for being here. But this is, if this is a community park, will also serve the residents of the Old Beach Resort area, as well as Shadlon, as well as potentially the resort. The sports center is right around the corner. So as we look at other areas down close to the resort and the oceanfront, it's not just a neighborhood park, it would be a community park available to all. So it's not just, you know, helping the community of Sea-Tac, which does need the additional help. But this will help the community. So I appreciate. And then moving forward, I don't know if we asked you to find the pot, where the money comes from, or we have to identify that today.
It's up to council. You know, does council want me to bring forward? What does council want me to bring forward?
Patrick, what's your question?
Then we'll wrap up. Mr. Kirschman, I just had a question. We, a couple of weeks ago, I took the family out in the Mundin Point Park. I thought we were going to another country. It's really far out there from Rosemont Road.
I'm glad you went down there.
Shelters were, I could literally smell the cedar, they were so new.
Yep. Just, just recently replaced.
How long ago did we do that?
Those were placed about 18 months ago.
And how many did we do out there?
Four.
They were, they were new and nice. Thank you.
And that is where our current CIP dollars really go towards, when things are, when existing infrastructure is declining. As I said, the playground at Sea-Tac Park is already programmed in next fiscal year to be replaced. And so that's where really 98% of our CIP dollars is going, is really just to replace aging infrastructure. And this is where, you know, additional funds are needed if you're looking for a major facelift or major renovation or new stuff, a new parking lot, a new bathroom. We're currently spending all our money replacing old bathrooms, replacing old shelters, replacing old playgrounds.
Thank you, sir.
Patrick, I think I'm hearing is we need a path to yes.
So, Mr. Mayor, where does council want to go next? Do you want me to bring forward legislation for draft legislation for you all to consider, or just hone in? Okay, draft legislation?
Yeah, but once, once we get that, then we can decide, you know, if there should be every other thing. But eventually, we just want to hit the yes.
Okay. And Mayor, likely, we'll probably find a funding source. It'll, we'll probably recommend that you debt finance this, you know, so about $300,000 per year versus taking $3 million of fund balances from any of these particular funds. And looking at it, the most, the clearest one, and it's not a perfect fit, it's probably open space that we'll bring forward for you all to consider.
Okay. Bring the options in, you know, but, you know, let's get the wheels rolling on this.
So we'll socialize draft legislation for council to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving on.
All right. Mr. Mayor, the next presentation will be provided by Katie Shannon and other members of our Public Works and also our consultant team. And this is the Comprehensive Local Road Safety Action Plan. We've presented previous iterations of this to you all. This is to update you on where we are and also next steps as it relates to further communications with the Planning Commission and also coming to you all future for consideration and approval.
Okay, great.
Yes, hello. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer and members of City Council. My name is Katie Shannon with Public Works Engineering. And I'm here today with Rick Loman, our City Traffic Engineer, as well as Devin Simpson from Kim Lee Horn, who has been our partner in the Local Road Safety Action Plan. And we are here to brief you all on the city's first-ever Local Road Safety Action Plan. So what is this plan? It's a comprehensive roadway safety action plan that aims to improve safety for all road users, vehicles, pedestrians, cyclists, everyone. It's data-driven, transparent, and an equitable approach. And it's the result of two initiatives that have a shared goal combined to produce this joint effort from both traffic engineering and engineering support. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Rick to provide an overview on the roadway safety issues.
Good afternoon. So, as you may recall, LJ presented to you last year in July to talk about crash statistics in Virginia Beach, not just in Virginia Beach, but state and national as well. And he noted that, that traffic fatalities are increasing while total crashes are decreasing. So this is disturbing trend regarding fatalities and crash severity. So you, you kind of gave us a, a charge to develop a comprehensive safe, approach to safety. We do have a program currently that generally deals with spot infrastructure improvements for problem areas. But this would be a new, this would be a new way of taking a look at things. So fast forward one month to August 2023, and we started this project, the Local Road Safety Action Plan. This builds upon the program that we currently have in place, again, where we annually take a look at where the crashes occur within the city. And this, you know, takes it to another level. This takes it to more of a systematic or a systemic approach to improvements in the city of Virginia Beach. So these are, there's some of the statistics, just to, to bring you back to, to last year's presentation. These are some of the statistics, which basically shows that in the period from about 2017 to 2022, fatalities increased significantly across the country. We presented these, these statistics, which are just for Virginia Beach, which showed that the, the blue lines in these showed, so total crashes, and the orange line shows fatalities. And, and as you can see, crashes are coming down and fatalities were, were increasing over the period. And that's a very disturbing trend. This is a, a kind of a statistic showing, or a graph showing pedestrian fatalities. Again, incidents involving, crashes involving pedestrians were, were on the decline. However, the, the fatalities were slightly increasing there. So we, we also mentioned that, that this was not just a Virginia Beach issue. This is a regional issue. This is a state issue. This is a national issue. And in fact, the Virginia State Crime Commission put out a report in 2023 that showed that, that in Virginia, crashes from the 2020 to 2022 time period were decreasing, well, they were decreasing, they're below pre-2020 levels. However, fatalities increased by 19% across the state of Virginia. And it showed that the, the causations varied. However, there were three that they highlighted in that report. A 22% increase in unrestrained fatalities, meaning drivers or passengers that weren't wearing seatbelts. A 39% increase in speed-related crashes, which means that speeding, you know, speeding is a cause of these crashes has gone up considerably. And then finally, a 10% increase in alcohol-related fatalities. So as engineers, the difficult part for us is that none of these are primarily solvable, you know, by improvements to the roadway system. And that's where this roadway, that's where this Comprehensive Safety Action Plan comes in, because it doesn't just talk about engineering, it talks about enforcement, and it talks about education as well. So that's just important to consider as we move forward in this presentation.
Okay, going back to the grant side of things, what is Safe Streets for All? It's a brand-new program that came out under the Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill, which is also called the Infrastructure Investments and Jobs Act. And its aim is to provide grants to communities for, with a goal of preventing deaths and serious injuries on U.S. roads. It's administered by the United States Department of Transportation. And we were lucky enough or to receive an award for the Virginia Beach Trail Phase One. We received a $15 million award. And one of the requirements of the grant is that the locality has a safety action plan for their roadways in place. So we wanted to develop this plan using the Safe Streets for All DOT requirements. Those requirements included that there was a target goal, a task force was created, there was both a safety and an equity analysis, there was public engagement, and then there was adoption by, the plan had to be adopted by the governing body of the locality. The plan identifies and prioritizes safety improvements, and it's kind of prioritizes them for future funding opportunities. There's also, at the same time as we're doing this, the Hampton Roads Transportation Organization is also doing a more macro look at safety improvements by doing a regional safety improvement plan for all of Hampton Roads. However, that only included one intersection per locality. So we wanted to do something that was more specific to Virginia Beach. So our planned timeline of how we got to this point, again, we kicked off in August of 2023. In the fall of last year, we did data collection, as well as the analysis on safety and equity. In late winter and early spring, we identified and prioritized the countermeasures. We held two community meetings. The first one was in November of 2023, and the second one was in March of 2024. We also held a stakeholder workshop in March of this year. We've been, public comment will be August and September. We anticipate adoption by the Planning Commission into the comprehensive plan on September 11. And we're looking for, or hopefully we'll come back to council in October for plan adoption as well. The Safety Action Plan has six main components, as shown here. The, there was a federal requirement for the plan to have a target goal as well as objectives. The target goal that the task force came up with was that we would aim to reduce fatal and serious injury crashes by half by 2055 with an aim towards zero beyond 2055. We intentionally did not go with the Vision Zero goal, because Vision Zero implies we can design roads that don't allow accidents, injuries, or death. And unfortunately, that's not true due to other mitigating factors. The plan also has four main objectives: to reduce fatal and serious injury crashes, to maximize opportunities to fund safety-related roadway improvements. We're always looking at federal and state grants, and we want to make sure that the benefit-to-cost ratio is, is positive for any projects that we're moving forward with. We want, also want to promote public awareness of roadway safety, and then, of course, implement an equitable approach to safety improvements. Another main component of the plan was to make sure we had collaboration and public engagement, and we had a task force in place. So we had representatives from various city departments, including the, as well as the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization. The representatives from city departments were from Public Works, Planning and Community Development, Parks and Recreation, as well as the police. And we met several times over the past year at plan milestones to help guide decision-making and plan development. We also, a critical piece of our plan was also the public engagement. We employed a hybrid approach to community engagement. So we had in-person meetings, but we also had online activities. There was an online survey, as well as an interactive mapping activity that we asked the public to do. We wanted to engage a larger audience and make sure that we were reaching everyone. All meetings were held at the Central Library, so a central location. The first community meeting was November 16 of last year, and we solicited input on citizens' transportation-related safety needs, and we asked them to take a survey. What we were hearing mostly was that there was many pedestrian and speeding concerns. At our second public meeting in March of this year, we came back and we talked about the proposed countermeasures or improvements that we were proposing to enhance safety. And in general, the, the feedback was very positive and supportive. We also held a stakeholder workshop in March of 2024 at the Central Library, and we provided large organizations within the city, as well as council-sponsored groups and commissions, an opportunity to provide their unique feedback, feedback and perspective. We invited eight different groups, as shown on this slide right here, the Hampton Roads Transit, the Navy, Bayfront Advisory Group, Resort Area Group, Central Business District, Centerra Health, the Southern Virginia Beach Creeds Ruritain Club, as well as Virginia Beach Public Schools. And again, the three big takeaways we heard from these specific stakeholders were a desire for more ped and bike facilities, increased enforcement and traffic calming measures, and improved roadway lighting. I'm going to turn it over to Devin Simpson from Kim Lee Horn now, who will discuss the countermeasures.
Hello, everyone. So for countermeasures, we took all of the input that Katie just talked about, both from the public engagement, our stakeholder workshop, and our task force committee, and we developed countermeasures in two categories. So you, we've got systemic countermeasures and location-based countermeasures. So systemic countermeasures are intended to be widely applicable, applicable across the city. It is a citywide plan. So these cover different area types, different user types. They can be applied broadly across the city and are intended to be proactive in preventing crash risk throughout the city. On top of that, we have some location-targeted countermeasures. Now, this list is a little bit smaller, since it's not the main focus of the plan. The city does have ongoing, as Rick mentioned, spot improvement programs where they address some of these location-targeted improvements. However, we did select the top six segments and the top five intersections that ranked high on the list historically of having crash concerns, but did not have any planned or programmed improvements. This plan does have roughly a five-year time horizon. So for those locations, we, we selected countermeasures that are potentially feasible to implement within that time year, five-year timeframe. So for our systemic countermeasures, we took an emphasis area approach. So we took this approach for both the analysis and the countermeasure development. So what you'll find in this report is 14 emphasis areas, and these areas are, allow us to hone in on different issues. Instead of just looking at the city as a whole, we look at different user types, different contributing factors, and different users as well. And then from there, by understanding the patterns and trends and how they change within those areas, we can develop countermeasures that are specific to those. And then we're even getting a more equitable, equitable approach of countermeasures across the city. So in this, you'll find both engineering treatments and strategic initiatives. So as Rick mentioned, we can't solve all problems with infrastructure. So your engineering treatments will be your infrastructure improvements, while your strategic initiatives will be more behavioral-focused campaigns, providing resources, help guiding people to certain resources to help target some of those behavioral components, because they are a large component of what we're seeing on our roads today, as Rick mentioned. You know, the, the lack of seatbelt use, the speeding, a lot of the concerns we're seeing on our roadways that are contributing to fatal crashes are these behavioral components. So those are, I would say, a newer component that the city is looking at and a major component of this plan. So for location-based countermeasures, these are what we're calling our high priority intersections and segments. And as I mentioned, these rank high on the list. They might not be the highest, but they're the highest that don't have any planned improvements. So there's six segments here, five intersections, relatively small improvements, manageable improvements. improvements, like I said, to be able to implement within the next five or so years. So project prioritization, this was a key component and required, federal requirement of the Safe Streets for All program is we had to prioritize these projects. And so we did this based on three categories. Safety, as that is the primary objective of this plan. Equity, as Katie mentioned, that is a component of the SS4A program, and then benefit-to-cost. So for benefit-to-cost, we're looking at, do the benefits of reducing crash risk outweigh the cost to implement the project? If that ends up being greater than a one, then the answer is yes. So we've got lots of subcriteria within this. Each project was ranked based on this criteria and then scored, so we can get an ultimate prioritization tool. And I will say, this is intended to be a tool. All of these countermeasures that we've selected are proven countermeasures to reduce crash risk. So even if it's at the very bottom of the list, there is still value in implementing it. It may just be that it makes more sense to implement it in conjunction with some other projects to get a greater benefit out of it as opposed to a standalone project, but all of them do provide value. It is just a requirement of the program to prioritize of some sort and can be helped, can help the city down the road in terms of how they're going to use it. And so Katie's going to talk about our adoption schedule and what's next.
So earlier in this month, we briefed the Planning Commission. We're obviously here tonight, or this afternoon briefing City Council. Our plan is to post the safety action plan for a public comment, hoping for tomorrow, but definitely this week. We're just making sure that it is ADA compliant before we get it online. And we will post it to our Virginia Beach, I'm sorry, the Public Works page for virginbeach.gov. We also have a couple more presentations we're giving. Later this week, we are going to be in front of RAC's Transportation, Parking, and Pedestrian Committee. And then on September 9th, we're briefing the Active Transportation Advisory Committee. On September 11th, we're on Planning Commission's agenda for adoption into the comp plan. Will be adopted into the 2016 comp plan, and then as they're working for the 2024 update, we'll go along with that. And then the plan is to be back in front of, back for council's public hearing on September 17th and then come back. We have October 1st right now identified for adoption by City Council, but that's dependent on what type of public comments we receive. We can push that further into October if needed. And then, once we're adopted, the plan is not to just take this plan and put it on a shelf and never look at it again. One of the other federal requirements is that we must be, the plan must be updated every five years, and on each update, we have to show outcome data to measure progress. So this will be something that we will use for selection of future grant opportunities we go after, or even, you know, with local funding dollars, where a prioritization of our recommendations of what safety improvements need to occur. And then again, we'll continue to update this on five years with the hope to be that some of the, we can check off a lot of the improvements and bring new ones in each year. And with that, I will take any questions, and we very much appreciate everyone's time today.
Okay, any questions? Michael.
And the comment is as much directed and meant for the city manager as it is for all of you. It's interesting that we got this presentation today because just a few moments ago, I received a message from a constituent that I haven't really spent, from a new constituent inquiry, let me put it that way, expressing concern about the traffic safety on Lord Dunmore. And that has been an ongoing challenge that we have been struggling to address in terms of public safety. And I guess my point is, first of all, I should have led with this. I appreciate and respect how much work and consideration and strategy was used to create the plan that you have. And I believe that a systemic approach to road safety and traffic calming and pedestrian and bike safety is preferred. However, what I'm struggling with, and this is what I want to make sure that you all are aware of loud and clear, I'm going to continue to address this issue. And I, my colleague, Councilman Hutchinson, isn't here today. I know he and I share the Lord Dunmore Drive as the border of our districts, and so we both hear about this a lot. There is a gap between the systemic analysis around traffic calming and traffic safety and what neighbors are reporting to us. And statistics, I don't know, I've heard an expression once, figures lie and liars figure, to borrow a phrase. And it's true. Statistics don't paint the picture that residents are experiencing. And I'm concerned that the systems, and I understand why this exists, and I understand in seeking federal funding, these processes are important, and I don't want to in any way diminish or impede that progress. But what I need to share is that there is a gap. And I'm afraid that there have been moments when we have excluded addressing traffic calming and neighborhoods' road safety because they don't meet our standards of analysis that are figures. And I hear about this a lot. I mean, as a representative, I'm servant of District Three, one of the most persistent concerns that I receive is around traffic calming and specifically in certain areas. And I can't go back to them and won't go back to them and report that, you know, their concerns aren't valid because the statistics and analysis that, you know, are, don't bear it out. Because it does, it does bear it out. Their experiences bear it out. And yet, we need these systems in order to develop a cohesive strategy. So how do we strike this balance? How can we not ensure that neighborhoods aren't disqualified from remedies that they seek and need because they don't meet the qualifications of our complicated metrics, analysis standards?
From a, from an enforcement standpoint, it's not that we disqualify neighborhoods or communities. It's just a matter of the resources, not having enough police officers to go around and meet every request from a neighborhood. The police department tries, even when sometimes the data or the speed tables don't indicate or the speed recorders don't indicate that there's a speeding thing, to put a presence out there. They just can't meet all the needs of the entire city, you know? So it's not something that's lost on deaf ears. It's just trying to manage the needs of working across ten different districts, because in every district, we get the same thing from every council member, you know, and just meeting the resources with the city as well. So it's not that it's falling on deaf ears, it's just trying to manage the resources and get all the resources appropriate. It's one of the reasons why I think council authorized us to put out a procurement process to look about traffic enforcement in terms of, for speed cameras and things like that, and finding the appropriate locations to put that. I feel that would help with part of the solution. Obviously, if we get to deploy those in school zones or maybe even work zones, we can then take and redeploy those police officers that we have dedicated towards those areas, towards looking at some more of these neighborhood concerns and have a little bit more presence to address those in a more timely and have a longer duration there to address those concerns.
Okay. Rick may have something to say.
From a, from a traffic calming point of view, we do have the standards and we do have, you know, the requirements for the program. Just because of, like the city manager said, I mean, there is limited resources and there's limited funding to what we could do. We certainly don't want to solve problems that really aren't there. And I know from a neighborhood point of view, I mean, you represent one neighborhood. We deal with all of the neighborhood issues, you know? We certainly don't want to solve every problem with a solution that's kind of overkill. So that's why the program is there and it does have, we don't, we don't always go directly by these standards. There is some flexibility there and we do show some engineering judgment in the use of our resources. However, we do have to be frugal with, with resources that you trust us with. And as far as the, some of the other things that the neighborhoods do request, we also have to live by a set of engineering rules and we have to set, live by standards and requirements to put in some of these type devices, because they're just not supposed to be used just where we feel this would best, where the community thinks would best solve their problems. So we, we try to, we do our best to solve the problems with, with the engineering tools that we have, not necessarily what the neighborhoods feel like the solutions are.
Thank you. If I could just offer a follow-up, there continues, so I appreciate that, Mr. Rowland. Thank you for that answer, and I definitely respect and appreciate your expertise. There continues to be a gap. And what I'm saying once again, and even spite of the fact, some of the efforts that have been made in that particular area, there, I, I can judge a matter based on the levels of inquiries that I receive and feedback. And I'm, once again, expressing, I need somebody, I need somebody to help find a solution. Because I'm not, I'm not going to, on behalf of these constituents, go back and say, sorry, your concerns aren't valid, or we don't have the resources. We need to find the resources.
We'd be willing, we'd be willing to sit down with you and members from the Lord Dunmore, or from the Fairfield Civic League to discuss these issues further.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Rose Mary.
So maybe I missed this, or so this five billion dollars has been allocated from the federal government for this issue. Is that nationwide and we have to apply for grants, or?
Yes, so.
How does that work?
So there's five billion available for the Safe Streets for All program, and they have two pots of money. They have the safety action plan, which essentially, this is a plan right here, and then they have implementation grants. Why, I feel one of the reasons we were really successful in getting the VB Trail Phase One came out of this five billion dollars of funding, it was fifteen million dollars, is because we went to, immediately to the implementation grants. We used our Active Transportation Plan as the safety road plan, our, our safety local road plan for the VB Trail, since it was a trail. Now, if we want to continue to pursue Safe Streets for All for roadways, we have to have a plan like this in place that is comprehensive for the entire city and focuses on roadways. We kind of found a little bit of a loophole and there was a little bit of less competition at that point, because all the other localities throughout the country were focused on getting their safety action plans in place, so we went right for an implementation grant. But that five billion dollars is over the period from 2022 to 2026 and is, you know, evenly divided within that time period.
Thank you so much.
Barbara.
Well, this local road safety action plan is, you know, very nice and it says good things and so forth. But what you started out, someone started out by talking about the causes for the increased fatalities. Unrestrained people, speeding, and alcohol. Three of those are factors from the drivers. We can do all of these things in here, but until people are going to drive like they've got good sense, we're going to continue to have these issues. I know I have been hearing this phrase lately, you know, well, these things are because these people are doing something stupid and you can't fix stupid. Now, until people are going to change and we do something to change the behavior, I mean, we can do all kinds of nice things like this, but we've got to change behavior. That, I think, is the critical thing. And until we focus on that, and so maybe it comes to enforcement. You know, we can do all of these nice things that we're talking about, but, but we've got to change the behavior of the drivers. And I think this is one of the things that I get the most complaints about is the way people are driving these days and the, and the unsafety, but it's not things that we can go out and fix. It's got to come from the people who are driving. And until we hit on the right thing for that, we're not going to really make a whole lot of progress. So maybe it comes down to enforcement or whatever we have to do.
And I completely agree, and that's why we didn't go with the goal of Vision Zero, because we knew that because of other factors such as impaired driving and stuff like that, you could, you can't design a road that is going to be a hundred percent safe, because there's other mitigating factors there. I know Devin mentioned that this plan has kind of a two-prong approach. We've got the engineering treatment countermeasures on the left, and then we also have the strategic initiative countermeasures on the right. And on the top row, the second from the right, you'll see impaired driving in there. And some of the countermeasures we're proposing are traffic safety checkpoints, impaired driving campaigns, and education essentially. That definitely goes hand in hand with any sort of infrastructure improvements we would be proposing or recommending.
Hey, Josh.
Thank you very, very much, Shannon, for the, the presentation and for your work, prioritizing a lot of these countermeasures. And I'm particularly happy to see, you know, some of the low-hanging fruit, like pavement marking and, and guardrails in particular, and some of these corridors, I'm familiar with most of them, but really very familiar with St. John Road between Dam Neck and, I believe it is, where the pet cemetery is, and you've got the S-curve there. It's extremely dangerous, especially a lot of rural roads with ditches where there's zero margin for error, and we're experiencing increased traffic on them. Bonnie Road is a great example, and I'm looking at our Public Works Director back there, and thank you for, in my council colleagues' district here, re-marking the, the center lines of that road where, you know, where that, that curve is by the, by the day's end and how, you know, it's thirty-five miles an hour, people are probably going about forty, forty-five and passing each other within about a foot of space. So, so those are, those are really great to see. And, and while, yeah, certainly we're not going to be able to change behavior, you know, we can certainly hopefully maybe deter or punish bad behavior, you know, when, when it happens, so that we can, we can encourage, you know, the behavior we do want to see. And if people are going to be out there and not doing the right thing on the road, at least we minimize the chance for a fatality or minimize the injury the best, the best we possibly can in some of these areas that, that need it. And I would just continue to ask that you, you know, go and try and find those easier, easier fixes that can be done a little bit more quickly. I think of another example in your district, Councilwoman, the pedestrian refuge on Independence Boulevard, just south of Virginia Beach Boulevard, that, that has been kind of long and, long to make. Yeah, so, and that's almost done, and that, and that's great. I hope it doesn't encourage more people to jaywalk, but at least if they do, they'll have a safe space to land in the middle of the, in the middle of the intersection there. So, and, and I, and I guess I would just add lastly that I hope we have enough engineers and folks who, on staff who can, who, who can actually implement this stuff, because I know at least one or two examples from my district where, where we don't have, we didn't necessarily have the personnel in-house and that we had to go outside. And, you know, that involves a lot of cost and some additional time. So, so if we need to be, if we need to be hiring more people to, to, to make sure we've got, you know, safe streets and pedestrian biking safety, then, then we need to be doing it. Thank you.
Okay. Chris.
I'll be quick, Mayor, now I know we want to move forward, just in terms of the point of the more FTEs and to get this done. I hope that the managers listening, we all received a memo in our packet on Friday about the number of employees and hours that are, that are taken away from staff work to, to actually assist all the board and the commissions we have. And then we know there's always such a large surplus of vacancy savings, so I hope we don't miss the low-hanging fruit in that area. We just need to make some hard decisions about where we're going to send our staff. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else at this point? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, the next presentation will be invited by LJ Hanson, Public Works Director. He's going to go over the municipal center project update, but also bring to council's consideration a request to transfer funds from current CIPs to cover a funding gap regarding those three CIP projects.
Welcome, LJ.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. What a day. This is a great job that we have, isn't it? We started off talking about aquariums, we moved on to regional economic development. Let's see what else we talked about. Now, we're going to talk about our, our safety plan and, oh, parks, let's not forget about parks, and we're going to transition now into the facilities that we have here on campus. I really do love that about my job. I hope you all enjoy it as well. This afternoon is my opportunity to tell you a little bit, give you an update as to our municipal center building renovation project. And just as a reminder, this is the complete renovation of the old City Hall, the old Building Two, and the old Building Eleven. And the reason I say the old is because... And the reason I say "the old" is because most of these buildings have been renumbered, or, in fact, all of them have been renumbered. At the conclusion of my, or as part of the presentation, though I do hope to get approval moving forward next week to transfer $8.4 million to CIP 100291, and that is the overall program that is executing these three building renovations. The increase will represent a 9.97% increase over the original program budget. And it's due to a lot of the same factors that we've seen on other projects, as we, as we've gone through the pandemic and the post-pandemic inflation, cost inflation, supply chain impacts, unforeseen site conditions, and then we've had some scope changes along the way. Additionally, there is an original contract that was issued to our vendor, or our prime contractor. That contract was for $53 million. As we go through the changes, we're, we're going to move up above the 25% change order limit, which does require us to bring that to City Council and advise you of that. So a little bit of background as to where we, where we stand currently. The former Building Two, which is now Building Eleven, which is also known as the Police Administration Building, is substantially complete. Occupancy occurred last year, December 4th of 2023. I think, I think all of you have toured that building. We're very proud of it. It is certainly a bright spot on campus. Some building improvements still remain, some minor things, punchless items, some cleanup, but on the whole, PD is in there utilizing it to its fullest capacity. Building One, former city, or former Building One, the former City Hall, which will now be referred to as Building Three, is, continues in its construction. Construction began on August 16th of 2022. Substantial completion is expected in spring of next year, with move-in taking place late spring, early summer. There have been some delays in the building, extensions due to unforeseen site conditions. Council will recall that we brought an item before you regarding the Historic Resource Commission and a waiver that we needed to pursue as it related to the roofing materials. And again, anticipated move-in is expected to be early summer next year. It's actually coming along very well, though. The last building in the list is Building Eleven. That's the former police headquarters located on Princess Anne, that will now be known as Building Thirty-Three. Construction began on that after police moved into the new Building Eleven. And we, we lost a little bit of time due to the city requesting some changes in the floor plans, and I'll, I'll tell you a little bit more about that here in just a moment. Substantial completion is expected next summer, with Public Works moving into that building, Public Works, NIT, excuse me, moving into that building towards the fall/winter of next year. Over the course of five years, this, this project began in 2019, but over the course of five years, on this prime contract, we've issued an excess of 22 change orders totaling $11.9 million. The items that are included in there are shown up on the, up on the screen. Now, this is not a complete, total, comprehensive list of everything, but these are the big-ticket ones. There's some costs associated with relocating the data center from the floor of the old Building Two to its new location, which is higher in the building. There are some costs associated with stormwater structures, and then other features that were needed to improve and make, make the facility ready for the police department. Building, future Building Three had some additional asbestos abatement. We were aware that there was asbestos in that building, but there was a little bit more than what we thought. And then the future Building Thirty-Three, carbon fiber for structural reinforcement and, and some changes to the, changes for the air handlers in all of the facilities. In terms of the overall program, as I mentioned, we're about $8.4 million short, and that breaks out, as shown on this slide here. Building Thirty-Three, we had some floor plan changes for about a total of $2.4 million. That's necessitated because a lot of, a lot of things have changed since 2019, especially in the Department of Public Works and our relationship with IT. We've had some requests for equitable adjustment. This is what we've tried to do to assist understanding that cost inflation and, and cost escalations that we've had to deal with, with this contractor throughout the term of that five-year contract. Some furniture changes, some change orders, contingencies, some changes that were made to interview rooms, and, and again, you can see all the elements that are up there. That brings us to a total program need of about $8.4 million. Now, I will point out that the request for equitable adjustment is currently under review. The price that we're showing there is an estimate, but it's currently under review to see if that's a reasonable number. Don't come to you with just a problem today, we do come to you with a potential solution. The beach maintenance facility has about $2.8, almost $2.9 million has been appropriated to date. We're proposing to take $2.6 million from that project. We don't feel that that's going to represent a material threat to the project in as far as the $2.8 isn't enough to execute the project. It will leave us enough funding to get to 35% concept drawings, and it will allow us enough funding to be able to investigate and identify where we would probably locate it, cite it. We'll come back to City Council at some point in the future through a future CIP submittal to talk about how we would proceed and when that, when City Council would choose to move forward. The other, so we would take $2.6 million from that project. The other project that we would like to take a little bit of funding from is the central plant loop replacement. If you recall, we have some aging infrastructure that's located here on campus. With about $17.8 million has been appropriated to that project. We believe that we can take about $5.8 million off. We don't believe that we could execute the entire $17.8 million in this year, so we feel that we can make up the difference with the $5.8. And again, we would probably come back to City Council at some point in the future to try to reestablish that, or we would find a way to phase it if, if needs be, if that was not able, if we were not able to get it in its entirety. If we took those two-dollar amounts from those two proposed projects, we would be able to cover the gap of the $8.4 million. Our recommendation from the Department of Public Works is to transfer the $8.4 million as identified on the previous slides, and then we would also ask council to approve the exceedance of the 25% change order limit. We do have an ordinance that's prepared to be brought to council at your next evening session. And then, just lastly, I wanted to point out that this was work that was identified by City Council through their priorities initiative in Govern 1.15, which is to bring the displaced employees back to campus. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Inflation and cost rises strikes us again.
Yes, sir, you know, I, I don't want this to sound wrong. I will say 10% of an escalator over that five-year period. That's not as bad as we have seen on some of the other projects. And, and so, I, I want to, I, I really want to give a lot of credit to staff. They've put a lot of energy into making sure that we were controlling costs. I never enjoy coming up here and asking you all to help cover a shortage, but I, I would say that I believe City Count, or the city staff have done an amazing job of keeping an eye on the budget for these three very large projects.
Hey, questions and concerns? Well, I guess it is what it is. Are we okay to move forward, and, you know, Patrick or Barbara?
That is the.
That's the loop that comes from our, our steam and cooling line, yes, ma'am. That, and it circulates around the entire campus, yes, ma'am.
When, when was that planned to be?
It is underway now.
It's underway now?
Yep, it's in design right now. But what we, what we forecast is that we would not be able to expend the entire 17, 17-9, I believe, in, in the first year of the allocation, so that's why we feel like we could take some money from that and still be able to.
Replace it in the next year, in the next CIP?
It is our intent to complete it over the course of the next two years, yes, ma'am. And that's where you've seen, around campus, you've seen where we've got a bunch of water that's out, and we have to dig up, dig it up and replace, yes, ma'am.
A million worth.
Just a comment, I thank you for coming with solutions.
Thank you.
Hey, Worth?
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Just two quick questions that are obvious to me, I need to ask. You have tried value engineering to get the number down below. I've got to ask the question.
Most of this was scoped back in 2019, but yes, sir, we have tried everything that we can to try to, to keep the cost down. Now, there were, you know, there are, obviously, are things that we can do, and there are things that we, that we really can't do. $8.4 million, I don't, I don't have a way to reduce that much scope.
Second thing quickly, on the change order, 25%, what is, what is the norm? That's 25% of a total project cost?
No, sir. It's 25% of a, of a work order, or, excuse me, of a purchase order. When the, the city's policy, and perhaps I should allow the city manager to answer the question, but the city's policy is that when we issue a purchase order, if we exceed 20, if we exceed 25%, we bring it to City Council. Dana's got it. He's going to save her on.
Yep. Good afternoon. So this is actually in the procurement act. If you have a fixed-price contract, which a construction contract is almost always a fixed-price contract, and then you exceed that by 25%, it requires obtaining the permission of the governing body. So that, that in essence is, is something that we need to do, just to make sure that we're able to execute the complete package of the three, three facilities.
Just to clarify, just to clarify, that's not 25% of overall project cost?
It's the fixed-price contract. So the $53 million construction contract would be, you're 100%, and you do 25% on top of that, to see when you need to seek permission.
It was, it was the $53 million, not the $84 million. The $84 million, if you recall, as I said, that was about 9.97% of the overall.
So we already are at 25%?
No, sir. This will put us over.
Okay, just, just, I'll just, so how much are we now of the 25%? Do we, do we not?
We're currently at 22.49%.
So this would put us where, 30%?
I don't have that number off, off, off my hands. Over the construction. Again, this is the, this is the one purchase order that was issued on the construction contract for three complete design-build renovations, so it, it's not, it's not just like a single thing.
And I think, council, you can recall, and some of you will recall this, this was right after 531, right? And the city administration, the city council at that time, made a decision that no employee that was in Building Two would have to come back to Building Two. And in a matter of months, they created a solicitation and put it out to bid. There are a lot of fast-moving targets happened, and that was way before COVID, all the supply chain issues, and the 40, 45% increases that we've been seeing across the board in our CIP.
Hey, Rosemary?
Well, it's a sign of the times, of the inflation that's going up. Just think what better shape our municipal center is going to be in once these buildings are complete. And our employees that have been offsite are able to move back in, and we should be saving some money once they, because I'm sure they're in rental space, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So once they move in to the old Building One, we should be saving some operational money. I don't know if you can address that.
I, I don't have the numbers that are, that are at my available, but what I can tell you is that, yes, we will be relinquishing leased space in, in various spots around the city, and, and so those costs will come off of our operational budget, yes, ma'am.
Oh, Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a moment to just point out that this is a consistent pattern that we're experiencing, and I think the private sector is experiencing it also, and in municipal operations. Just this morning, I had a meeting about another very important city project that's being bid out, and it's coming in way, way over what our budget allocation was. And it really puts us in a tough position, and I just think it highlights the importance of the other conversations that we had today about where our, where our needs are distributed throughout the city, and how we're going to address this. And I don't think there's, I, I credit the, the work that the staff has done, that you all have done, to anticipate these, these cost increases, but also speaking to professionals in the field, both who work with the city and also who I know who work in the private sector, there's no sign that construction fees is going to be decreasing. In fact, signs point to an increase, continued increase in costs. And much of this, I understand, has to do with the lack of qualified subcontractors on various jobs, and, and many other reasons as well, and related to the work, all of that's related to the workforce materials. I think we're all well-familiar with that. But we have to try to figure out a way to anticipate what these costs are actually going to be. And I know this was a many, multi-year project. I'm not pointing this out to point out any perceived deficiency, it's just to say, this pattern that we have established ourselves in where we, and, and I can think of a really important, safety and roadway improvement in District Three on Lenhaven Parkway that I know is coming back in way hot, way overbid than what the budget allocation is. And that, we need to get these projects done, and we can't keep coming back and trying to figure out how to pay for them, so, I don't know, I don't know what, I, I don't exactly know what the answer is, but I, I do know we have to recognize this as an ongoing issue, and, and figure out a way to anticipate these costs, so that, so that we're able to continue to deliver the services and, and improvements that people expect, not just for our campus, but for our roadways and the safety and our infrastructure.
Mr. Mayor, it's, and it's something that's happening across the industry. The Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel project is significantly over budget. It's, it's so much money that's out there for public infrastructure projects with just limited amount of contractors and a limited amount of employees, the same time material costs are going up crazy, crazy throughout the roof. And the one thing, too, is, is happening across the board, and a lot of these cost estimates, they don't come from staff. It's staff hiring, industry experts to put those estimates together, and everybody's seeing the same thing, you know? And a prime example, I think everybody knows, is our Bonne referendum project. You know, basically, in 2021, when we got that referendum passed, everyone is thinking $600 million, but since all of our, been getting those prices updated, now we're over a billion bucks, you know? And most recently, council gave us some funds for the Winston-Salem project. You know, that project kept seeing 30, 40% increases as well. It's something that will make our CIP conversation very enlightening. Council's going to have a lot of difficult decisions to contemplate on how best to address that, you know? It's going to take us looking at rightsizing dedications, or possibly raising revenue, or possibly reducing the CIP. Those are all going to have to be the decision points that we're going to have to make collectively together.
Okay, Chris?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I, I've kind of one second. It's not happening. All of the private sector, because of the private sector.
They would go out of business. When Pembroke runs short, they come to us. Laskin Road runs short, they come to us. A bank wouldn't finance this, and so maybe what we should do going forward, because this is before we got here, is maybe just since the price you get, just add 30% to it at the beginning, because if that's what we're seeing consistently for five years, again, in the private sector, there's not a single financial institution that would approve a project for $50 million without a contingency, and then the, the, the person getting the loan comes back in the middle or 80% of the way and says, "You know what? We're, we're $15 million short." That doesn't happen. And so we are carrying the burden for these private deals. When they run out of money, they come to council. And we've been very generous. This is not a private deal, but I think we have to, if we see it's a trend for five years, as everyone's saying, and it's going to continue, then we should see the price we get, and just go ahead and tack on 30%, and then we'll be right in line. Thank you, sir.
I think it was challenging times. You know, one of the reasons this building was built was the old building, you know, it, it had sick building syndrome. It had a lot of asbestos, there were moles there, mold spores, and there were, you know, degenerated water systems and HVAC, and, and, you know, one of the reasons this building, I believe, was held up for six months was because they couldn't find the people to make the bricks on time. And, you know, it's, you know, we have a confrontation with reality that we have to deal with, but at least, you know, thanks for at least coming. deal with, but at least, you know, thanks for at least coming back with, you know, some fixes. Appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to council comments and everything, and if it's okay, I'm going to start off. Yesterday was a very sad day for our city. You know, a number of us went to a service for one of our heroes that succumbed to, you know, cancer. And it was a very emotional and moving ceremony that we attended. And, you know, once again, you know, you know, it just really emphasizes what some of our public safety folks, you know, go through. And, you know, the situation with firefighters and cancer is not just limited to us, it's nationwide thing. But I asked, you know, Patrick, if he'd be willing to, you know, just kind of bring up to speed about what we have been doing, and then we can maybe, you know, someday in the future, talk about more about what we can do to address this situation.
Yep, so, Mr. Mayor, I think this issue first became, it's something that's been the fires, the fire profession's been dealing with for a long time, but I know city council took action and provided funding for this as well. So I think city council probably two years ago provided around $300,000 in funds to do early screening, and that continues to this day. Not the same amount of money, but basically right now, once you pay for it, once you get everybody that's that went through the entire queue, you still need to provide funding for it. So right now, in the city's risk management account, there is funds allowed for employees that need to take early screenings, you know? So this is something that is continuing with the city as well. Also, as part of the city's legislative package last year, city council requested the state to provide additional support for providing funds for these early cancer screenings for not just fire, but also our EMS and police professionals that requested this as well. Those weren't funded, but the state did create a panel, which we have several members of our staff participating on, to explore ways that we can address early cancer screening and provide recommendations for the general assembly to continue to explore for funding. So, Mr. Mayor, basically, the best thing to say is that this continues to be a priority of the city and the city council through its funding appropriation, and it's something that we do continue to cover the costs for.
Yeah, I've been doing, you know, some work in collaboration with the Cancer Society, and screening is a problem that, you know, goes beyond our public safety. You know, there are, you know, pockets of individuals even within this region where have extraordinarily high incidences of cancer. And one of the things that, you know, that hopefully we're going to be going forward, and I may have had some conversations today, you know, that we really get a, really encourage people to go out and get screened. Prostate cancer, breast cancer, you know, rectal cancer, you know, within certain populations regionally is a major, major concern. But but once again, I think we're going to have to emphasize those, and I spoke to a couple of our friends that were there yesterday in Richmond, and maybe even get some, you know, folks from the federal government, because, you know, this is a national, you know, concern that we all have to deal with. And I thank, you know, the folks that did attend yesterday, and, you know, I'll tell you what, it was a very emotional day for, you know, so many people. And, Rosemary.
First of all, we apologize for not being there. I moved out of town and didn't get in till late last night, but I certainly. It's very distraughtful to see this happen, and I can speak that personally. I lost my husband to cancer, and I also am a breast cancer survivor myself. So we have been, my family's been impacted heavily with this, and we know that early detection is the key. It's the difference between life and death, really. Get early detection, it could save your life. So the earlier we can do these things and catch it in the early stages, it's extraordinarily important. And I think most of you know that I helped find, found a crushed cancer event that all the money goes to cancer research. And this year, we honored the firefighters, and we had them there at the at the event. And it was quite, quite beautiful. And so far to date, we've raised about $2.4 million, and all that money does go to research, which, research is what's going to find the cures and the clinical, fund the clinical trials and the things like that. And that's one of the biggest things that we could do is to fund the research, and that's what's going to help beat cancer. So in fact, Matt Chevronati, the other firefighter that died, he had the same cancer that my husband passed away from, which was anaplastic thyroid cancer, which is incredibly rare. So, and gentleman from yesterday with the esophageal cancer, that's a rare cancer as well. So anyway, it's it's very sobering, and and I'm glad that we're doing what we're doing, and we do need to work with our other agency partners and to see if they can step up and help us as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Michael, and then Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, I am one of the two liaisons to the Virginia Beach Human Rights Commission along with our mayor, Mayor Bobby Dyer. And recently, the commission received reports of ongoing racist, anti-Semitic, homophobic content that's being posted on social media, apparently by Virginia Beach high school students this summer. Many citizens have been made aware of these posts, and I believe they've been shared widely throughout the community. The Human Rights Commission has expressed their concern and their disappointment and their outrage, and has asked me to read this letter and to share this letter with all of you today. Dear Councilman Berluci, as our liaison to city council along with Mayor Dyer, I want to update you on an issue discussed at our August 8 meeting and ask that you share it at the city council meeting. The Human Rights Commission received reports of ongoing racist, anti-Semitic, and homophobic content being posted on social media by Virginia Beach high school students this summer. We were shown photos and videos, some of which included students' names. The content featured slurs, mocking of religious texts, and even students in blackface. There was also a video of students holding alcohol. Commissioners were disheartened to learn that no action could be taken by VB schools since it occurred during the summer. Commissioners are outraged and have grave concern and disappointment of what appears to be an increase in this behavior. School Board Chair and Deputy Chief of Police in attendance responded, with the latter saying that he would investigate this matter for criminal activity. It is alarming that such behavior could occur without consequence. Last October, in an Arizona school district, a teen was murdered by a, quote, "rich kid gang," end quote, which was fueled by social media, specifically Snapchat. The Virginia State Police Crime Report for 2002, 2000, pardon me, 2022, 2023 was released last week, and in the category of hate crimes, there is a 177% increase for antisemitism and homophobic crimes. Given these statistics and the work being done by Virginia Beach City Public Schools to address to address these issues through programs like TID, Togetherness Through Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Coalition, which is active at each high school on a small scale to help improve students' sense of belonging, we need to consider how to protect and reach all students by providing a better, safer path forward in respect for everyone. We thank you for your service as our liaison. Signed, Dr. Virginia Ginger Jankot, Chair of the Virginia Beach Human Rights Commission. I'm going to share copies of this letter with all the members of council, as well as the city manager and city attorney, and ask that the letter be included into the public record for this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Just wanted to give a big shout out to the ECSC East Coast Surfing Championships that were conducted this weekend. It's pretty much a week-long event, and especially the Virginia Beach JCs, this is the longest serving surf competition in the world, 62 years, I believe, this year. Tony Foligno headed up the JCs this year and putting that on, and special congratulations to Blair Barton, a local Virginia Beach resident who won the surfing, the male men's category for that. So we look forward to next year. We, that event, footprint expanded this year and added sand lacrosse and action sports and beach volleyball to that this weekend. It was also, this weekend was Funk Fest, as well as the Neptune Festival had a wine event, or was it wine or beer? I wasn't there. It was, excuse me, a beer event, not a wine event. I was not there, of course, but congratulations. So I want to read a letter that the city received from a visitor from Rhode Island. He says, "I felt compelled to send a quick email to you regarding my family's recent week-long stay in Virginia Beach. I haven't been to Virginia Beach since I was a child, but I was so impressed with the city as a whole, especially the beach, the boardwalk areas. The cleanliness with trash and recycling receptacles everywhere was amazing. We felt completely safe while walking throughout the area, never being bothered by anyone. As a veteran and retired police officer, I appreciated the visibility of public safety personnel, even getting a chuckle while seeing four police motorcycle officers running radar with a fifth on a traffic stop just down the road. I could go on with appreciating the monuments to the Navy SEALs and law enforcement officers." I'll just sum it up with job well done. Thank you for the, from the Fornier family from Rhode Island. We had a fantastic time.
Well, thank you. Anyone else? Josh, and then Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just anecdotally, I was on the boardwalk a couple weeks ago, happened to run across a lady visiting from Atlanta. She had exactly the same thing to say about her experience at the resort, how clean it was, how wonderful the beach ambassadors have been. So I think, I think we're doing a better job than we are in some ways. So I just wanted to acknowledge the daughters of the American Revolution who installed, and the mayor was there, and the vice mayor and several other members of council came to the Thurgood House for the installation of a commemorative plaque, which acknowledged the Thurgood residents and the enslaved persons who were there, their contributions to the, in the pursuit of liberty and to the American Revolution. So there was a, it was a very, very nice ceremony, and I thank everybody who was able to attend. And yes, this was, I'm on the Neptune Court 50 this year. The events are starting to kind of, you know, get a little busier, and we did have the craft beer festival on Saturday. I attended Symphony by the Sea on Thursday. It was a classical comedy routine by Symphonicity. It was absolutely fantastic, and there were probably 1,000-plus people there on a beautiful, beautiful evening on Thursday. But but importantly, on Friday, there was the Neptune Festival unveiled its 50th Celebration mural, first ever mural on 30th Street just south of Alaskan. That artwork will be turned into the festival's poster this year, and it was, it was done by a wonderful art teacher from First Colonial High School by the name of Devin Miller. And if if you're in the area of 30th Street and just south of Alaskan Gateway, please take a look, and congratulations to Devin Miller for a really, just a wonderful design. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, this is the time that we're getting the annual reports from all of our boards and commissions, and I just want to thank Terry, especially for all the work she does in keeping our boards and and commissions on their toes and making sure we're getting this. I find it's extremely interesting to read, you know, what everybody's doing, and I think that we have a tremendous asset in all of these advisory commissions and citizen groups that we have, and the people who are serving are just doing the greatest service. And I think we've, you know, we may be take for granted, and I do notice that we had a memo in our packet about the staff time that it takes to work with our boards and commissions, and I know that's that's a lot, but this is the way we have our input and our feedback from our citizens. And so these advisory groups are just a great asset to us, and I think they're doing a wonderful job, and I really appreciate their time in getting these annual reports to us. One of the things I noticed in the planning commission, and I don't know, maybe this is the way it's always been, but all of the terms on the planning commissioners will expire next between February of '27 and January of '28. They will all be replaced within 11 months. I don't know how that happened. I don't think that's the way it usually happens. I don't know if it's because we had people that left in the interim, and I don't know what, but somebody could look at this. But, you know, we could have a total turnover in our planning commission in '27, and during that year, they will all be reappointed, and until then, we'll see to have any terms expiring. I don't know if this is the way it usually is, or maybe we need to look at that and make sure we're not doing something that happens into all of our boards and commissions. We won't have any reports in the interim.
Go up to the microphone.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, that specific board is due to, planning commission members were extended when we left the 731 district to the district system we have now. They needed to be reappointed, and so then they were extended. So it did put us at a little bit of a weird predicament with with that board specifically.
Okay, so it came, this came about as a result of our changing the systems?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I don't know, but I don't know if there's anything that we could or should be willing to kind of correct that, but I don't know. Yes, it can be corrected. They've got terms that expire at these particular dates, and they're all in the same year.
Most likely, I'll have to look at the actual makeup of the board, but most likely, at least some of those members can be reappointed again. I would just need to look at the specific membership listing.
All right, anyone else? Yep, Sabrina.
I wanted to share with you a, an ordinance that the Commissioner of Revenue would like to provide and have heard, certainly solicit your support on this, but it is regarding how the city imposes an admissions tax on participants at events that are open to the public. And so with that admissions charge, this ordinance seeks to alleviate the charge or the taxes of admissions for public, private elementary schools, secondary schools, colleges, who go to events, and they're usually sponsored school events. And so it seeks to alleviate the admissions tax for that group, as well as admissions tax paid directly by the Commonwealth, public subdivisions, and the United States. And so I have copies of the ordinance for your review, and I'll pass those around. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Rosemary.
I just wanted to, it's the end of the season, Labor Day weekend is coming up, and many of you probably have heard that the hotel, some of the hotel occupancy has been down this year, about 20%. And then there's a group that is doing great, that you can't get a night in their hotels, they're fully booked. And so there seems to be a fairly big disparity between those that are down and the ones that are fully booked. And one of the things that's brought out, and I may not be right on this, but I'll throw it out there, if I'm wrong, just understand, we don't have the branding that we used to have in all of our advertising, which I remember we used to do like Live the Life, and, of course, there was a time we did Beachless, which probably was not a very good idea. But for us to really look at the branding that we do for our tourism. So I think this is a good time to really start to take a look at this, maybe start to be planning for next maybe start to be planning for, for next year and, and next spring. And, and I know that the Advertising Committee is being reconstituted, but this is a good thing for them to get started on. And um, and to look at hotels that are doing really, really well. I've been told is that they do a huge amount of marketing of activities and things that's going on. And they're getting people there. So maybe we could look at the ones that are doing really great and the ones that are lacking and see if we can come up with a plan. Because we want everybody to do well. And if they don't do well, we don't do well. And so also, when the hotels aren't filled, that means it affects the restaurants. Then people aren't eating out as much. And that could affect the uh, things like for the admission taxes. So there's, there's really a trickle-down effect. So uh, anyway, I just thought I would bring that up and see. I think this is a good time to sort of, you see, at the end of the season, sort of take a look at, and maybe we can figure out a way to kind of do some things better and help the ones, you know, we, we want everybody to succeed.
Can I ask, do you have a list of the ones that are on the trickle-down? So um Councilman Remick and I can see that, because we are lives on.
I think Patrick could probably help with that.
Or they don't want to be known.
Okay, good. Chris. Thanks for that. Just to Vice Mayor's point, um, I mean, I, we just rebranded, I thought, advertising. Do a big rebranding, pay a big company to come in and help us rebrand. And then also, um, I know one of the hotels, the Marriott, I know the Delta is doing extremely well. And both of those, the Marriott's brand new and the Delta has invested a lot of money into renovating. And so we always talk about shopping centers. Um, but if our, our hoteliers don't improve their product, the big news is we have other cities that are competing with us. Charlotte and Agset are promoting themselves in our Wawa's. And so it's gonna be hard to convince individuals to come to our city and pay three or $400 for a two-star hotel that hasn't been renovated in five years. So we should look at shopping centers, but we should also encourage of those individuals um at the oceanfront that are taking advantage of FNB sales across the city going into the tip fund with Atlantic Avenue improvements uh to maybe invest into their product. Because again, as someone with a family of three, I'm not gonna pay three or $400 for a double two queen room that hasn't been painted, renovated in 20 years. So I think it's, it's a holistic uh matter, macro. Uh, and we just, I think last year, Patrick, we almost spent $12 million a year to promote our, our beach and our tourism.
That's roughly how much that goes into the TAP program, I think.
So, you know, tourists do want a nice.
Hey, Worth.
Mayor Dyer, so um I have also read and heard the same things that my, uh Vice Mayor Wilson just mentioned, that travel across the country, not just in Virginia Beach, is down of his less disposable income across the board. Uh, but that's not necessarily a fair excuse, because we need to then up, get up our game as a city. And so the Advertising Advisory Committee, which I've been a liaison with Councilwoman Ross Hammond for over a year and a half now, has been reconstituted with new members. And several old members of that committee have uh complimented the new uh membership roster because of several reasons. Um, but we, we, as I say, this, the city did through the CVB Convention, Visitors Bureau did hire the Miles Agency three years ago. They onboarded for about a year, so they're a year into their marketing campaign for the city. And so folks ask, you know, what is their slogan? And it still may, we still maintain the Live the Life slogan, but the Miles Agency has introduced um Happiness Is. And then you fill in the blank, and, and the ad, it says happiness is having a nice meal or taking a stroll down the boardwalk or going in the ocean or other parts of the city as well that are equally attractive as the resort. So um maybe we can have a presentation at some point uh from the Miles that we, we have last year, if you recall this past year. But the AAC is a meeting again. We, we stopped because we had to reconstitute the membership. We need to up our game because it's, it's competitive out there.
Oh, yeah. That's a very good point you made. Okay, folks, we're, I tell you what, at this point, the only thing we have on the agenda for closes, the appointments, and let's go ahead and defer that. And let's go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.